Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, June 28th, 2018. And the opening statement, which I haven't found yet, is as follows.
It's up there.
Well. Found, okay. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Comcast Systems, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 21st day of June 2018. Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capazoli. Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz. Mr. Tex Arney.
Here.
Mrs. Almond.
Here.
Mr. Williamson.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Here.
Ms. Sacks.
Here.
Mr. Oakman.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Let me remind everyone who's sitting out there, if you can't hear, let us know because these microphones come and go. And if you can move as close to the front of the room as you feel comfortable, it's easier to hear, okay? So. I'm under announcements. We'd like to welcome a new board member, Jeffrey Oakman. You want to wave your hand? I think everybody has met Jeffrey as he made his way to his seat. And we're delighted to have you here. And you've all also been notified that we will be having a second meeting in July and had a chance to reply to that. Under discussion, we have Princeton Board of Education, the Long Range Facility Plan, and we have a very fine report from Chris Costanza detailing what this is all about. And I'm going to ask Alan Porter to chime in as we go along.
Thank you, Mrs. Gunning. Just a very brief overview of what we're doing tonight and what our standards are. Chris is going to get into the weeds and the details. But the overview is, the Board of Education has submitted a long-range facilities plan to the Commissioner of Education. And under the municipal land use law, the Planning Board is given an opportunity to review that and to issue a report, if it chooses, to the Commissioner. And our task under the ordinance is really to review the proposed long-range facilities plan in the context of our master plan, to look at consistency and also its interactive or iterative. So to the extent that we have comments on how the -- on the plan and they impact on our master plan, it can -- this process can inform the Planning Board as to possible amendments to the master plan. But the task tonight is not to amend the master plan, not to do any site plan review of the individual projects, but to review the overall plan and report on it relative to the -- our master plan. And Chris is going to go over some of those details. A couple of comments that -- because there's been a lot of coverage as to what is in the long-range facilities plan and what's not. I just want to note that the Thanet Site, which has been discussed in the context of the long-range facilities plan, is technically not part of the long-range facilities plan that has been submitted to the Commissioner. So the Board will be hearing items probably about that and its future use, but in terms of our comments, that site is not technically or -- technically or otherwise not part of the long-range facilities plan. There were in some of the materials some other sites that were identified as possible school sites, including Westminster, Ryder Westminster, as well as 29 Thanet Drive. And those have -- are not part of the long-range facilities plan or part of the Board of Education Plan at all. To the extent they were in a letter, they've been withdrawn. So that's not before us or part of anything that we're going to -- that we need to talk about. I guess there will also be an identification that in the current master plan, there are two sites that are designated for future possible school sites, and neither of those is available any longer. One is at the Institute and the other is now on -- it's off the Great Road. And so those, at some point, but again, not tonight, since this isn't the master plan hearing, those sites will be removed. So tonight, we're hearing the long-range facilities plan, which includes the projects as well as some of the demographer's information as to how the School Board arrived at its plan. I guess as a footnote, not insignificant, let me also talk about timing. The School Board submitted its long-range facilities plan to the Commissioner in April. There was a follow-up in May and a clarification in June. But from the Commissioner's point of view, the plan was submitted in April. So if you can do the math and our 45 days for reporting, you can determine when our report was due. But that doesn't preclude us from what we're doing, and the Commissioner hasn't yet acted. And presumably, if we submit a report before the Commissioner acts, it will be seen in whatever they do with our report, whether on time or out of time. But we're -- they won't reject us because we're out of time. In addition, the long-range facilities plan is a preliminary plan. So in any event, the School Board will need to have a final plan at a future date, probably. If they proceed that way, that would be after -- if the referendum is enacted. So those are my just general comments without taking up too much time.
Okay.
Yes.
Question. So are we being asked tonight to vote on whether the long-range facilities plan is consistent with the master plan? And what's the reporting piece look like? So I'm assuming Chris would write the report based on our comments and questions, but are we taking formal action?
We are taking formal action on what our comments to the Commissioner should be.
Thank you.
And can I also ask, if the Thanet Road Site does get reintroduced into the long-range facility plan at some point, would we then do a similar hearing to this to comment on it?
That's my expectation.
Right. I guess.
Maybe I just ask the attorney for the School Board whether there's anything that I've said that he -- that the School Board disagrees with.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Shay, and I'm an attorney with Parker McKay, and we're the attorneys for the Board of Education. Mr. Porter did my introduction, so I agree with everything that you said, and there's no need to repeat it.
Okay. And let me, while we're -- before Chris starts, it's our practice to swear in anybody who talks to us to the extent they might give testimony. So perhaps, including attorneys. So perhaps, let me ask these four people from the School Board, whether to the extent you're providing testimony, you swear or affirm to testify truthfully, and if you'd state your name for the record and respond to that.
Sure. Kevin Shay, yes.
Stephanie Kennedy, yes.
Scott Downey, yes.
Jim Wintowski, yes.
And Chris, I'm going to swear you in as well. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in the testimony you're about to give?
I will.
Thank you.
All right. And let me just remind you, you have to speak directly into the microphone or it's not recorded. So, Chris, if you would.
Thank you. Just want to make sure, does everyone hear me? Thank you. So I just want to say thank you again for the Planning Board for having me here. It's a pleasure to review this application and work with the municipality and the applicant. In this case, the matter before this board is not a typical site plan. It's a typical subdivision or a planned unit development application. This is a review of the Princeton Schools' Long Range Facilities Plan. So as Councilhead indicated, that the -- what the Board has before them is a set of documents correspondence dated, I believe it's mid-June, a couple of weeks ago. But the process of the submission of the Long Range Facilities Plan began April 20th. The plans I reviewed, just for clarity and just for consistency, it's the plans I reviewed are May 23rd, which was the first set of revised plans.
Hey, Chris, we're having some problem with your -- with your mic.
Talk directly, okay. So the matter before the Board tonight is the Long Range Facilities Plan. The original submissions began April 20th, but the plans you have before you is a second iteration of revisions in mid-June, a couple of weeks ago. A part of the packet, you should have received the letter dated June 1st indicating a request by the School Board to name four public -- four sites to be designated as public school sites. As Council has indicated, we should make -- be aware that those sites are not part of the Long Range Facilities Plan. We are only reviewing the plans that were submitted to the municipality, which is generally to elementary schools, middle school, high school, and a new construction of the Valley Roads Site. Also, part of that letter, in June 16th, the School Board clarified that the administrative addition at the John Witherspoon Middle School and a new transportation maintenance building that was originally considered on Harrington Road were withdrawn from the state's submission. So what are the statutory requirements of the Long Range Facilities Plan? There's two parts to it. The School Board has obligations and the Planning Board has obligation. I'll start with the School Board, and their obligation is to prepare a long-range facilities plan and submit it to the Planning Board for review and findings, to incorporate of those plans, goals, and objectives into the municipal master plan. The Board's obligation is to hold a hearing only for this application and adopt findings set forth in the municipal land use law such that the review and findings to be issued concerning the Long Range Facilities Plan is limited to whether or not the Long Range Facilities Plan itself is informed by and consistent with the, at least, the land use plan element as well as the housing element of the master plan. Now, the Board could also seek to have all the other elements considered. And I believe back in 2006 and prior to 2001, this Board, although different membership, had considered those elements. And I would suggest that the Planning Board do consider all the elements of the master plan, not just limit it to the land use and housing elements. So the review is limited to whether or not it's informed and consistent by the elements of the master plan, to determine whether the prospective sites for school facilities contained in the plan before you promote more effective and efficient coordination of school construction with the development efforts of the municipality. The Planning Board's obligation is also to devote, in addition to holding a hearing only for this application, is to also report and set forth findings that will be submitted to the State Commissioner's Office. So that is a brief summary of the statutory requirements. As we stated, that we're actually beyond the 45 days, but the School Board, rather, the Commissioner's Office has not ruled on it, so we do have an opportunity to ask for testimony regarding consistency with the master plan and produce findings for the Commissioner's consideration. Now, again, this is not a courtesy review of the plans that you have in front of you. This is just for reference. You're only looking at the plan in concept. So I'll just move on through the report, summarizing. Regarding the master plan goals and objectives, I'll start with the two mandatory elements that need to be addressed, which is a land use plan element and the housing element. Under the land use element, I pulled out four statements that were pretty important, pretty consistent from the 2006. Some repetition, if you were a honest board in 2006. Those goals are to maintain and balance community that offers a mix of land uses, preserve existing community character and mix of uses, encourage historic preservation, and protect the character of established residential neighborhoods. Regarding housing, we're in a bit of a quandary here. Now, the statement in the current element of the master plan is that I felt was relevant for the Long Range Facilities Plan was that the School Board should address how the Long Range Facility Plan promotes, preserves, enhances Princeton's unique community life and housing stock. The issue we have here is that there's going to be a new housing element in Fair Share Plan that's not yet adopted. And to that point, there's a series of enrollment figures in the report. What the School Board should do is provide testimony as to where they got the figures from, and the Board should make a determination whether it is consistent with their findings to date and whether or not it is, in fact, informed by and consistent with the housing There are a series of other elements regarding circulation, community facilities, open space and recreation conservation, which I won't go through unless asked of by the Board. But I will suggest that the Board asks the applicant to address those issues in the report. Regarding the 2017 reexamination report, one of the major objectives identified in that report was that previously, there was a concern regarding the comprehensive system in municipal services, including the need to study whether or not the town requires a community center and determine the possible uses for the Valley Roads School Site and investigate a joint public works garage. To the extent in which these problems and objectives have changed in this report prepared last year, a solution as to whether or not there should be consolidation of public work locations should be considered. I raise that point because there should be a discussion regarding where the bus is going to go. More importantly, though, Princeton Regional Schools are identified in 2017 report that the School Board was reviewing current school needs, and a remaining question is the status and redevelopment of the Valley Road Building. I believe, in essence, that question's been answered, the proposing of a school site. Additionally, the one important elements from the 2017 report was that there should be an effort to develop a sustainable policy to promote energy efficiently through building design. And finally, as I discussed before, there will be a new housing element, so how that is addressed should be up to the Board and asked of the applicant to address that. So what is the Long Range Facilities Plan itself? What are we reviewing? Again, this is just a concept of the plan. We're not looking at school sites specifically. But what we'll do is briefly go through what the plan is about, and that is regarding the elementary schools, mostly HVAC and electrical service upgrades, security improvements through all the schools. Specifically, at the Community Park School, there will be a new entrance feature with security and relocation of offices. At the middle school, there will be a canopy addition and some athletic field improvements. And I believe parking along Franklin Street, which needs to be addressed since it affects circulation. And the -- at the high school, there will be some infill additions of the courtyards, which will be more or less atrium spaces with additional rooms. The footprint of the high school won't change. And finally, of course, is the new school site at Valley Road, 25 Valley Road. Presently, it's considered a public use site in the current community facilities plan map. What the applicant's proposing is to put a school use at that site, so the Board needs to make a finding whether or not that proposal is consistent with the land use element of the master plan. Regarding the enrollment figures, as I stated before, the School Board should testify or provide some testimony regarding where the figures are rooted from, describe the figures and describe the methodology of how those figures came about. They should describe the statement of need, which you have a copy of. And generally, in summary, it is that the public schools are facing capacity issues throughout the entire district, and the proposal is to consider a series of grade realignments, which will resolve, in essence, by the new 5-6 school. I'm going to skip over the details, over what is proposed in the school site. I'll defer to the applicant to describe those improvements. So with the Valley Roads School Site being considered as a school site currently, the question is, where do the administrative offices and the buses go? Now, we have a letter dated June 1st describing that there's an intent to relocate some of those functions elsewhere. However, they are not part of the Long Range Facilities Plan. So that issue needs to be resolved. And as I understand it, discussing with Council, that effort will need to come back here through an amendment of the Long Range Facilities Plan. So we're jumping a little bit, but it needs to be addressed if the Board were to take action tonight on the Long Range Facilities Plan as presented tonight. And just to clarify again, finally, the future school sites that were referred to in a June 1st letter is, in essence, irrelevant, part of this application. In my letter, it was part of that research and report, but just to clarify, technically, they're not part of the Long Range Facilities Plan. However, they do mention 25 Valley Road as being part of it, so that does need to be addressed. And I will summarize some of the comments. In addition to what I described before, the School Board should comment on the relationship generally to how the plan itself is informed by and consistent with the master plan, how the school site's not currently designated as a school site in the master plan as it currently exists, is it consistent with the land use element. There will need to be a master plan amendment to designate Valley Roads Site as a school site, even though in the past, it was used as a school site. And I believe the Board may have some history on that. I've only been the planner for a few months, so I'll defer to the Board to provide some of the history. If not, I'll defer to the applicant to give us some history on that site. And finally, all school sites should be submitted to the Planning Board in the future for a courtesy review, as well as when the School Board and bus facilities come in, wherever that location is. They may have to come in for a site plan, conditional use or use variance. However that is addressed, depending on the location of the site, will be resolved in the future. And that summarizes my -- that ends my report.
Thank you. Are there questions for Chris? Anyone? No?
Well, I guess I just have a question. You mentioned at the very end of your presentation that the administrative offices and the bus facility would need to come in for, depending on where it gets located, conditional use review. I had some lack of clarity whether the 5-6 school also requires some specific review along those lines, since it's.
It will require at least an amendment to the master plan to designate it as a school site. Presently, it's designated as a public use site.
Uh-huh. But in terms of a more developed plan, because obviously what we have tonight doesn't allow us to do a thorough conditional use review, is that?
Not a traditional site plan review, but there are elements of the plan, the concept that affects circulation, for sure, regarding the access off of Valley Road. So the concept should be discussed of how it's consistent with the master plan. But no, you cannot talk about the proposal directly. It's basically a catch-22, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Just a clarification, or I'm not sure I understood the question entirely, but to the extent that the School Board requires administrative offices, apparently, that function or that type of use is not subject to review by the Commissioner of Education, so it does not need to be part of the long-range facilities plan. And so to the extent other sites are identified as possible office use, they may not require this same review. There is a question, at least on Valley Road, as to whether it requires conditional use approval, since it's not only isn't in the master plan as a school use, it was previously a school use, and there's perhaps an issue of whether it's pre-existing or whether that is no longer a school use and requires conditional use before any approvals can be made. And to the extent that bus parking is somewhere, it's got to conform to the zoning, and depending on where that somewhere is, it may or may not conform.
Ms. Almond?
But you are saying that the bus parking, which is absent from this, will require review, unlike the administrative offices?
If it's in a site where bus parking is not permitted. I mean, if we're, you know, rather than being.
But there's no problem with our.
Rather than being cryptic, if it were at Thanet Road, it would require approval since that's not permitted in that zone.
Well, we also don't know about Thanet Road, so I mean, I'm having a problem with having to make a decision about something that doesn't exist in front of us. And particularly, it seems sort of odd not to be, to have this be the document that is presumably the most complete document, and yet it doesn't include administrative offices or buses.
That's correct. I guess the applicant should address that, and that could be part of our report to the Commissioner.
Anyone else? All right. I think we're ready to hear from the School Board, so.
So I -- Mr. Downey. He prepared the Long Range Facilities Plan, so I would ask him to give the overview of that for the Board.
As I understand, you have a PowerPoint presentation you're about to present, and we have hard copies of it.
You have hard copies? You should have hard copies. I'm sorry. Yeah, you should have hard copies up there. I can cite page numbers as I go through, since I'm assuming you can't see what's behind you there. Again, to state, Scott Downey, I'm a principal with the Spiesel Group. We're the architects that are working with the school district. And on behalf of the school district, we did prepare the long-range plan and the material that you've received before you this evening and prior. The Long Range Plan for the district is, in simple terms, for any district, is an identification of needs and the posing of a solution to those needs. The needs in the case of the school district consists primarily of enrollment and capacity considerations and educational space considerations. So the district faces growing enrollments and has faced growing enrollments, faces over-capacity schools, a need for upgrades to its facilities, physical plan upgrades, safety, security, and other considerations for educational space, to have the right kind of space to deliver the educational curriculum they desire to deliver to the students, as well as field and athletic needs. So for all intents and purposes, the Long Range Plan is effectively the same as the projects that have been submitted to you or the projects being advanced constitute the Long Range Plan. Now, on page two, I've gone through a little bit of information that I'll outline for you here, because the document you received that is the Long Range Facilities Plan, or the LRFP, is a relatively cryptic set of reports. The LRFP is a website that the Department of Education operates. The district inputs their information. Those reports are the document that gets submitted to the Department of Ed, designating the LRFP for the district. However, they're not terribly self-explanatory, so I'm going to try and outline the information for you. But just to hit a couple of the highlights, the reports in that packet, there's a report entitled "Existing and Projected Enrollment." And when it comes to projected enrollment, the Department of Education will only consider five years of projected enrollment. The district has looked slightly beyond that, recognizing, and we'll go into the details, but recognizing that the further you get beyond five years, the accuracy declines. but recognizing that the further you get beyond five years, the accuracy declines. The demographer, in this case Sundance Associates, has indicated that that's about a 1% decline a year. So the Department of Ed only considers five years, but districts, because they are trying to plan long-term, try to look out further to gauge their actions accordingly. So the existing and projected enrollment report for the LRFP that was submitted shows a five-year projected enrollment of 4,298 students. There is a report in there entitled FES District Practices Capacity. FES stands for Facility Efficiency Standards. In that report, since we're going to really amp up the confusion here, that report actually presents three different capacity numbers for the district. They're all calculated differently, they're all calculated automatically by the Department of Education's website, and they each have a particular meaning to the Department of Education's review process. However, neither, none of the three that are reflected there specifically relate to the way a school district figures out how many seats, classrooms, and space that it needs for its students. So you have the Facility Efficiency Standards, or the FES, capacity, which is a comparison of the district's schools to a model at each grade level that the Department of Education has for schools in the state. There are obviously differences, different spaces, different size spaces. The FES capacity is based on square footage, with adjustments made by the algorithms in the website to compensate for rooms that are either smaller or larger, and gross square footage that is either smaller or larger than the department's models. There is the functional capacity, which again is based on square footage. The functional capacity looks at more or less the gross square footage of the building, the spaces, those spaces that conform to the state's model are considered based on the square footage in the model, and then other space that might be in that building is excluded from that calculation. So if the model, for example, was based on an 800-square-foot classroom, and the district has an 850-square-foot classroom, that 50 square feet would be handled differently in that calculation. There is a capacity designated on there called District Practices Capacity. Now, District Practices Capacity is the closest comparison to something that I'll refer to as Educational Capacity, which is kind of the number that means the most to the school district. And that is that it looks at each space in the building. If I have 20 students and I need a classroom, how many classrooms do I need for the students in the building, considering the class size I want to operate at, the schedule I want to run at the school, and the specialized instruction I need to deliver at that school? So a special education classroom has a capacity of 12 students, a general education classroom might have a capacity of 22 students. Capacity can change with the use of the building. If that general classroom is changed to special education, then it now has 12 students, and the capacity of that building drops. So capacity is not an absolute number, it is a number that reflects the policies and practices under which the school district operates its facilities. So the capacity, educational capacity, that the district has reported to the public and has posted on their website in the report that I prepared for them, shows an existing capacity of 3,473 students, and the district is proposing to construct capacity that would total just over 4,700 students. Now, I gave you that number primarily, we'll come back to that when we present the enrollments, when we talk about the difference between that number and the projected enrollments. On page three of the handout I gave you, you have a listing of three other reports. These are primarily breakdowns of the various deficiencies in the buildings that need to be addressed, upgraded, repaired, and those reports are included. I'm not going to go through those in detail, but if you have any questions, we can certainly talk about those.
Yes, Scott, just-
Yes.
-your numbering seems to be one off from ours on the pages, so.
Okay. Oh, I apologize. I did skip the title page, okay. Thank you. Yes. So this is actually page-
Four.
Four, yes. Page four for us, page four for you? Yes, okay. Page five. So page five shows the district-wide enrollment projection that, again, the district has presented to the public and which was developed by Sundance, the demographer, working with the school district. You will see three sets of colors. The blue bars are historic enrollment. This is enrollment that is in the books, so to speak, past years. The red figures are the first five years of projected enrollment, and the green bars represent an extended projection, as referred to by the demographer, which considers years six through 10. So the Department of Education, as I've indicated, looks at the five-year projection, and in this case, the demographer's maximum projected number was 4,298 at that five-year point. Now, you also see in this graph, you see the bars, which represent the projected enrollment, and then you see an orange line that escalates above them. So at various times during this process, there have been considerations of whether housing impact, number one, should be considered. The demographer determined that it should in some regard, and we'll talk more about that. And if it should, what would it amount to in terms of a potential student impact? So the orange line represents the demographer's maximum projection with a maximum consideration of housing impact. Now, if you look to the far right of that line, you'll see that the number is 4,820 students as a maximum projection. If you recall, I indicated the district is planning a proposed capacity of just over 4,700. In other words, the district has recognized through this process that they wanted to understand the potential maximum and the potential, you know, minimum projection, if you will, or a reasonable projection that might consider less housing, and their planning process has targeted a capacity that is in between those two, meaning they don't necessarily anticipate all housing is going to be developed and impact them in the timeframe shown here. So they are not being as aggressive as they possibly could, based on the demographer's report, but they obviously want to plan and make sure that they are considering enough capacity for a reasonable estimate of students that falls within the range you see on this graph. The purple line you see down below is the district's current educational capacity at 3,473, as assessed by myself. Now, on the next page, page six, you see a listing, a table, from the demographer that shows the various housing developments and the student contributions that the demographer assessed that led to the consideration of that yellow line on the prior graph. You'll see he's listing each housing unit or each housing development, and then the number of students he's calculated, the number of students contributing from those housing units are based on numbers generated by Rutgers that are for the state of New Jersey, based on certain types of housing and the typical average or output student-wise that districts have seen from those types of housing. Now, there are some listings on here. For example, you see COA Phase One anywhere, or COA Phase Two anywhere. There are some unknowns around some of those listings, so he has looked at, he obviously gathered information from the township and used that to the best possible that he could. But there are some assumptions that he has made in the case of those, because, number one, he doesn't know where they're going, so he can't accurately assess what elementary schools might be more heavily impacted. Number two, he doesn't fully understand, because it isn't currently known, what the makeup of units in those developments would be. So he has made assumptions based on averages that Princeton Township has seen from different developments in past years, and that is where he has derived the number of students he has considered in that adjustment.
Scott, just so nobody gets out of line, we're now the municipality of Princeton.
Okay, thank you.
No more township, no more borough, thank you.
The next slide, page seven, I'm graphically representing the projections that the demographer generated and that you saw in the prior graph, to help you understand how those impact different grades over the years. So if you look at the table or the graph on the left, the five-year projection pre-K to five, you'll see the blue bar is historic, the red bar is the five-year projection, and the green bar is the 10-year projection. So those figure, the base projection with housing, I'm sorry, base projection in red and base projection plus the housing in green. So what you can see in these graphs is that the enrollment growth the district is experiencing is not limited solely to housing development. There is some organic growth here in, as reflected by the difference between the blue bars and the red bars in the graph. So the pre-K to five years are growing, even without additional housing and with additional housing impacts, there is additional growth on top of that. The same for the grade six to eight, and slightly, almost level, the high school grades nine to 12. Now, when you move out to the 10-year projection, the earlier grades, pre-K to five, level out, the middle school grades, six to eight, as they are currently configured in the district, continue to rise. And at that point, the enrollment projection, or the increase in students begins to push into the high school, and you can see that the high school is growing there both in a base projection and in a base projection plus housing. The next three pages are three tables that break down these numbers into K5, six through eight, and nine through 12. You can see on the K5 graph on page eight that the elementary schools are in reasonable shape right now, but they are projected to grow over five years and then level out in the six to 10-year range. The middle school, the grade six to eight, John Witherspoon School, this is where the district's most acute problem is right now. The district has been managing that school overcapacity for an extended period of time. That condition is worsening and projecting to worsen, projected to worsen in the next five years before it begins to level out. And at the high school, as the elementary and middle school numbers of students begin to push through, they begin to emerge into the high school in years five through 10, based on the demographer's projection. So 10 years out, the demographer projected a maximum potential enrollment at the high school of 2,020, a five-year figure of 1,0687. The district's target capacity for the high school is slightly below that maximum because the enrollments are projected to be growing out to, close to the end of the 10-year cycle So the Long Range Facility Plan, or the LRFP, consists of a variety of components which represent solutions to the needs, and the needs being enrollment growth primarily, as well as educational space needs, having the right types of spaces to deliver the right kind of education across the district. There are specifically five listings here, existing school physical plant upgrades, I'll go through what these are so you can understand them. The construction of a new five-six school. The construction of a new five-six school, the district looked at a broad range of options in terms of grade configurations, additions, different school setups, different new schools that serving different grades. The arrival at a five-six was that one of the big advantages was that it allowed the district to address projected enrollment growth at the elementary school and at the middle school for grades basically pre-K through eight at one facility. By moving the fifth grade out of the elementary schools, they free up space, so special instruction spaces can backfill classrooms that they were pushed out of in the past. In grades six through eight, pulling sixth grade out of the middle school brings the projected enrollment at that facility back down to where the capacity at that facility exists. And that five-six school through the construction of a single school allows them to handle that enrollment growth across the district through grades, pre-K through eight. The high school, then, is proposed to be renovated and expanded. Talk about the high school project and the nature of that expansion, but that expansion and renovation targets both enrollment growth and educational space needs at that facility. There are athletic improvements proposed, specifically for three campuses, the high school, John Witherspoon, and here across the street at Valley Road. Then there is also the relocation of the district offices. In order to convert Valley Road to a five-six school, the district offices have to go to another location. The LRFP, as it was originally submitted to the Department of Education, included two projects you do not see on this list because they've been formally withdrawn. At the time they were submitted, the district was looking to do two things. One, purchase a property on Harrentown Road, which would serve for the grounds and transportation facility and the parking of buses, and they had proposed an addition at John Witherspoon, which would house the district administration facilities. Leading up to the decision to initially advance those projects, the district had looked at a fairly broad range of properties, probably a dozen or more that we had looked at over a period of years, not finding those properties to be available. That list at the time did include the Thanet property, which was not available. However, that property reemerged recently, within the last several weeks, and as a result, the district evaluated that. That was actually a first choice before Harrentown and the district administration and John Witherspoon were considered, and as a result, they've withdrawn those two applications, and we are in the process of preparing an application related to the facility at Thanet for district administration, as was discussed earlier. That is, however, not ready yet and has not yet been submitted to the Department of Education, so it is not currently represented in the plan, but it will be when that application is ready. So specifically, the district did look at and considered, on page 12, the, some of the components of the master plan in terms of goals, the land use goals, maintaining land use balance, preserving and projecting neighborhoods. In particular, I would highlight the approach taken at the high school, where the district has tried to avoid expanding the footprint of that building because of impact on neighbors, parking fields, and the general congestion in that area. There was a lot of focus on promoting safe routes, pedestrian circulation, bicycle use, we'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the five-six school. The enhancement of educational and recreational facilities at the five-six Valley Road campus, at the high school, and at John Witherspoon. And on conservation, from a number of perspectives, trying to capitalize on existing resources, focusing the impacts on a limited number of campuses, and pursuing lead and a variety of sustainable features in the design of the new school. So on page 13 and 14, there's an outline of the physical plant upgrades. This is one of the components of the LRFP, and these upgrades are happening at each of the schools. They consist of mechanical upgrades, air conditioning to various spaces, security, secure entries, enhanced control over the buildings, door improvements for lockdown, security, and accessibility as well. Configuration of the school buildings for them to accept emergency generators in the future. Currently, emergency generators are not included in the plan, but electrical service upgrades would be included to handle the air conditioning, the HVAC upgrades, and to configure the buildings to accept generators in the future. At Littlebrook, library upgrades would be undertaken. Littlebrook Library was not upgraded in the past, when other school libraries were. At Littlebrook and Riverside, adding control doors to restrict travel through the building and compartmentalize the building for security reasons. At the middle school and the high school, a variety of HVAC and air conditioning improvements, electrical upgrades, entry upgrades for security, a connection between the C Wing and the E Wing, which we will talk more about when I show you a site plan. Renovation of the old library space, when the media commons was created, there was a space where the library was that has been used since then for a variety of activities. That space will be renovated to improve the nurses' area, as well as provide educational space. Acoustic upgrades in the very loud area between the cafeteria and the commons, and consideration of creating additional pull-in parking along Franklin Avenue. At the high school, similar upgrades, they do include some roofing replacement, they include some improvements at the retention basin along Walnut Lane to try and mitigate some of the water issues that have occurred in the past, and also building entry and security upgrades similar to the other schools. Now, the second component of the long-range plan that we had talked about was the creation of the five-six school. The five-six school is proposed for the Valley Road site. The five-six school would replace the existing Valley Road school building on that site. The fields would remain in use that are on the property. Currently, that site has support for 107 parking spaces, and as you know, it's across the street, adjacent to the fire station. So the proposed school building would be approximately 80,000 square, 7,000 square feet, would be a two-story building. The orientation of the building for energy, sun control, and sustainability reasons is in its long dimension north-south to allow us to use the sun and solar features as effectively as possible. The general site layout, if you look at the top of the plan, you'll see Valley Road running down the left, you'll see Witherspoon. The entry to the school would be off the Valley Road side, in a location similar to the entry to the district administration offices at Valley Road currently. There is an entry to the south where bus drop-off would occur, so you see a loop that runs from, I'm going to mispronounce this because Stephanie coaches me on it, but I still haven't got it. Geo, thank you. So the buses would come in off Geo, that circular drive supports 12 large buses and three small buses, and then they would exit from a control point on Witherspoon. We like to keep parent drive and bus drive separate. Buses can be controlled, parents not so effectively. So the parking and drop-off for the parents would acc- So, the parking and drop-off for the parents would occur off of Valley Road, as proposed. Now, the layout you see here with the bus and the parking, generally desired to have them separate. We've interacted fairly extensively with the township, we've had a couple of meetings with the police department, you know, we are aware of concerns about traffic in the area. And the layout you see coming off of Valley Road is specifically designed to try and maximize the amount of queuing that can occur in that lot on the school property and off of Valley Road. So you can see there's actually about 676 feet of queuing that could happen within that parking drive, and then another 586 feet on Valley Road before reaching the corner at Witherspoon. We are aware of, obviously, the emergency services in the area, police, the existing fire station, and the future emergency services building to the northwest corner of Witherspoon and Valley Road. So our goal was to try and move the traffic as far from that corner as possible, to try and alleviate concerns in that regard. So the students would enter from a controlled entry period off the south, off the bus drop-off area, that entry to the school would be open during drop-off periods and departure periods at the end of the day, otherwise, it would be a secured entry. Visitors, parents, and other arrivals would enter at the Valley Road side of the school. There is also, you see the arrow that is not filled in next to the parking area, there is also a separate entrance there for evening activities in the gym area of the building. So on page 17, you'll see a breakdown of how the building compares to, a building and site compares to the current zoning on the site. Jim, maybe you can walk us through some of the features here?
Yes, Jim Winkowski, engineer. As you see, we tried to compare what the existing zone is right now, the R6 zone, to the existing conditions on the site for the existing building, and then what the proposed conditions would look like with the new building and impervious coverage. Running through the existing condition is that the existing building has a footprint of approximately 40,000 square feet, with the new building of the school would increase to 50,000 square feet, so that's about 10,000 square foot footprint difference, but the school, the proposed school would be about 87,000 square feet. The impervious coverage right now for the entire lot, lot itself is about nine acres. Thirty percent of that lot right now is covered by, you know, building footprint or impervious surfaces such as, you know, paving, parking lots, sidewalks. The proposed plan would increase that to just under 40% of impervious coverage. The setbacks of the existing building right now to Valley Road is about 90 feet, that would be reduced down to 56 feet. For the zone, the front setback of 25 feet is required. And for Witherspoon, the existing setback right now is about 30 feet, which would be reduced down to 20 feet, but that's just for one small portion of the building, the remainder of the proposed building's setback would still be consistent with where it is today. Floor ratio, that's the sum of the floor areas of the proposed building divided by a lot area, would be at 21%. For the R6 zone, granted, it's for a residential zone district, not necessarily applicable to a school use, but that's at 25%. And the building height for the zone is 30 feet, and it's my understanding that the building will conform with that height of 30 feet for the R6 zone. Proposed number of parking spaces, you can see on the concept plan, is 119 divided between the visitor lot, which is off of Valley Road, where the school student drop-off would be, as well as the employee lot, which would be the interior component where the bus drop-off would be. Bus loading to be enough for 12 buses to load along the sidewalk to entry to the school. Speaking with the district transportation department, they only expect about nine or 10 buses required for, on a daily basis, so there will be excess. And then the sports fields, the soccer field and baseball field will be consistent with the existing dimensions out there, which are typical for a high school and above
The, so the building was specifically laid out to try and respect the site in a couple of ways. Number one, the mature trees that run along the roads on Witherspoon and Valley Road would be maintained, trying to keep the building similar to the current setbacks, and including community features, including community space on the Valley Road side of the school, some community space in the building, meeting space, the ability to conduct community activities in the office and wellness area of the school, where the district might be able to have, you know, a doctor come in and provide community services in what would be the nurses' station there. On the plan on page 18, you see purple dots around a variety of spaces that could potentially serve community uses and community groups. The building is designed to be segmented, so the classroom wing can be shut off from the remainder of the building, and the commons and cafeterias areas can also further be closed off from the gym area. So the gym area could be open in the evenings for activities and community use as well. To the right-hand side of the plan, you see some lockers, so there are existing locker spaces at the building now that the district teams use when they visit the fields. These lockers would support that use, but they would also provide other use. So, as I mentioned, we've talked about encouraging pedestrian and bicycle use with staff, as well as students, having facilities where that, where those staff can change when they bike to work, shower and so forth, should support the change, or staff being willing to make that change in their commute if they live close enough. So the images on, starting on page 19, obviously, all these images are preliminary, it is to a degree the nature of school district projects, that the process is different than what you would normally see from submissions. So the Department of Education requires a schematic submission, which is the initial submission to the Department of Education, this happens early. It happens prior to referendum, so districts do not have the funding to pay for full design and engineering development of their projects, which is why the plans that you see are relatively cursory. Following referendum, full design and engineering occurs, and the district then needs to make a final submission to the Department of Education later on in the process as well. So that second submission would be out there in the future. So all the images we're showing here are conceptual in nature, but we thought they might help you understand how the building is responding to some of your master plan So the image on page 20 shows a concept of the entry on Valley Road. The materials that you see here are meant to tie in with the materials in the area, a natural stone, brick, similar to on this building and others, as well as other stone materials, some green edge to the roofs intended to be copper, that would weather to that color over time. The elevation you see on page 21 would be a potential elevation facing Witherspoon. So you see some glass on the second story, a mixture of materials on the lower level, the trees you see, again, as I indicated, we would try to maintain those trees that are on the Witherspoon roadside of the property. Moving around the site toward the existing fire station, this would be a concept of how that corner of the building might look, the two-story classroom wing in that case. Moving further around to the side the students would enter on, this would be the bus drive with the fire station to the left and the fields to the right. So the existing building across the street has a stone archway in the center of the building, and our intention is to save that archway, relocate it on the site. In this case, we're looking at locating it in this part of the building, because that way, if students are arriving in the morning and departing at the end of the day, they would be passing through that arch going in and out of the school. The district has committed to, is committed to recognizing the history of the site and developing educational components of this building that will reflect on and allow students to learn from that history. Obviously, at this conceptual level, we haven't developed all of those, but those would be developed as the project moves forward, the archway you see represented here. Looking down on the building, you see Valley Road to the left of the plan, or the diagram on page 24, Witherspoon running up the lower part of the plan to the right. So the building, building roofs, as we mentioned, would be, should be within that 30 feet that is suggested by the zoning. The exception to that is the center portion is a higher roof, that's the commons area, but the square footage of that would be limited to 10% or less of the building's square footage. You do see some green areas represented, it is our intention to let this be a LEED-certified building, and I'll go through some of the features that we're planning, but you do see that we would try to plant some green roof areas, including some green roof areas that might be lower, that the students might be able to have access to as well. This would be an image from the drop-off entry area on the opposite of the prior view on page 25. So moving to the high school, another component of the long-range plan, as we mentioned, the high school, the district recognized the difficulty in expanding this building, we did look at the possibility of expanding the footprint, but it's a tough task without impacting neighbors, parking, and/or fields. So the decision was made to seek expansion inward, if you will, there are three courtyards at the building that the district is looking to infill and capture additional space in that way. But the site you see here, there are also some site improvements that are planned, so the potential turfing of what is known as the lacrosse field, the green field you see to the lower part of the plan on page 26. Improvements to the tennis courts, including drainage around those tennis courts, right now, the water drains over them, as well as improvements to the fencing. The retention basin you see in the upper right is the one that has flooded in the past, it's our intention to look at ways to increase the capacity, the holding capacity of that retention basin, and we have been working with the municipality and will continue to do so, in an effort to try to find the best solution to that area, which is a low point on Walnut Lane. Also, to the left of the green field, in the lower center of the plan, you'll see an outline, the intention is to build a small outbuilding at that location next to the stadium, about 1,000 square feet, to provide public bathrooms, a small concession, and some storage space. Neighbors shared with us on more than one occasion some concerns that they have about the lack of bathroom facilities around the stadium. So this is specifically meant to address that concern. The plan you see on page 27 illustrates, without going into an immense amount of detail, how the high school would be expanded. So the infill of the three courtyards, which are shown in the yellow in the center of the building, will allow us to create a series of flexible educational spaces and different types of educational spaces that don't exist in the school currently, while adding capacity to the building. Also, there are some purple areas on the plan, the media center to the right, where we plan to add an interstitial second floor to pick up some additional classrooms in that area, and the fitness center to the left of the plan, where we also plan to add a partial interstitial floor there to add additional space, again, within the building. The dark purple area would actually be a second-story addition on top of a one-story portion of the building that is there now. So the only expansion of the outside footprint of the building is that, next to that purple addition, we need to add an egress stair and an elevator. So that footprint would occupy about 560 square feet, but that is the only outboard expansion of the high school that is planned with this increasing capacity and improvement of educational and other spaces. At John Witherspoon Middle School, you see a site plan here, most of the work at John Witherspoon Middle School is renovation and upgrade for the school, but there are two, three exceptions to that. The first is a canopy connector between the C and E wings. Currently, the students have to walk around to the upper part of the plan and then back down to get to the other wing, or walk through the outside courtyard. This would not be an enclosed hallway, it would be a covered canopy over a walkway, so to protect the students from the rain and the elements. And it would include some screening on the Walnut Lane side, so someone looking down that section between the wings of the building would see the screening, as opposed to the students moving back and forth, which is primarily for security concern reasons. To the right of the plan are the fields on the campus, so the fields here would be upgraded with new backstops fenced in and improved, you know, dugout areas, not literally dugout, but surface dugouts for the fields, and the infill mix would be improved at the various fields there. And then to the far right, the district desires to add some additional parking along Franklin Avenue. You see the blue area, which would support probably 10 or so spaces, this was what was included in the original Department of Education submission, but the district is interested in possibly expanding that, and did include the budget to do more than just that 10 spaces in its proposed projects. Obviously, parking is at a premium in that area of town, so this parking would help to alleviate that. So the only other expansion of a building is at Community Park. Community Park, we have a need to create a secure entrance. Right now, the configuration of this school poses some challenges. The entry of the school with its canopy has a particular character, we obviously wanted to respect that. The entrance, as you go in now, releases you into a lobby, we like the entrance to be connected to the office, right now, it doesn't satisfy our needs for a secure entry. So the improvements you see here would do two things. One, it would swap the counseling guidance space and the office space, so that the office could be next to the entry, and a new secure entry vestibule would be placed on the outside of the building. So that is additional footprints, about 400 square feet, the existing canopy would remain as you see it today, and this would be added in the corner of the building to allow for a secure entry to be created that connects directly to the office area, so it's more easily supervised. All the other improvements are renovation and/or upgrade at the various facilities that are included in the LRFP. Specifically with regard to the five-six school, as I mentioned, our desire is to seek LEED certification, silver at a minimum, hopefully better. And specifically, there are a number of things listed here that we've talked about and looked at, including in the project. The orientation of the building was carefully considered, rainwater management on site, support for bicycle and pedestrian use, including lockers, shower that would be provided, reduction of heat islands, using proper roofing and landscaping to allow us to do that, green roofs, some gray water use, gardens on site that might make use of water as well. Energy systems, that would be high efficiency, mechanical, obviously, the building will be commissioned, the design will be commissioned, and construction will be commissioned, high efficiency lighting, control systems, and renewable energy. Materials, we've talked about using recycling, reuse materials, locally sourced, low NOVOC and so forth, as well as recycled content, and a focus on indoor air quality in all aspects, daylighting, acoustics, views, and the quality of ventilation that is delivered to the school would all be primary considerations for the design. So that is the presentation, and at that point, I'm certainly happy to address anything you feel I haven't covered, or if you have any questions, or I don't know, Stephanie, if you have anything you want to add.
All right. Questions? Go ahead.
I have a few questions, I guess I'll pick up where you left off and ask you to talk a little bit about the sustainable features at some of the other locations besides the five-six school. It seems like the high school offers some opportunities regarding daylighting with the way that the courtyards are being infilled, the HVAC upgrades at all the schools, there are a lot of different ways to do that, can you talk a little bit about?
Sure, yeah, you're absolutely correct, actually. The improvements at the other schools will implement similar concepts, so I should have mentioned that. The five-six school is the school that we feel we would pursue LEED certification on, we probably wouldn't at this point look at that on the other schools, although we would obviously look at whether it makes sense, but given the nature of the work at the other schools, it may not be obtainable. But the features that I've described, particularly at the high school, daylighting and stuff through the courtyards, features such as the efficiency of the mechanical systems and so forth, would all be part of those projects also.
I don't want to monopolize.
You can just jump in. Okay, thanks. Considering the potential costs of these developments, have we given consideration to if the design of facilities can meet maybe, let's say, FEMA requirements for like disaster recovery centers, so we can possibly qualify for the billions of dollars in grants that FEMA gives out, let's say, to pay for generators and the like?
That's something that can certainly, that's something that can certainly be considered and can be looked at once the design and the engineering advance. There are also incentives, for example, for, you know, solar systems that would provide the ability to support those types of uses, so that's something that we would discuss with the school district.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. If we go back to slide 11 in the presentation... If we go back to slide 11 in the presentation, so you give us A, B, C, D, and E, and then there's something that's marked MP on the left in an orange circle. Is that where you, your opinion that these features are consistent with the master plan? I didn't quite get, at the beginning, why these are marked MP.
I designated them just because they involve the site features of the buildings as opposed to the renovation component, which is listed first. Yes, those four would relate to the master plan more closely.
Sorry, that was a speaker gone wrong. Question on our planner's report on page 7 of 13, where he's talking about the new part, the reexamine of the master plan. Under E, community facilities, going to number three, a joint public works garage and vehicle storage area for the Princeton, I guess that's just for Princeton, and the Board of Education should continue to be investigated. Does anyone at the table know the status of discussions between the administrative teams of the municipality and the schools regarding shared services for facilities management?
There have been conversations that hasn't been discussed lately. The board is certainly open to opportunities to share with the town. One of the latest items that the school is considering is trying to find a way to do mechanic work on-site. So, we're just beginning those conversations, so we want to talk to the town about it, as well as neighboring school districts, and have a garage where we can all use and share.
Thank you. And just my final point is, I noticed that the drawings showed, I know that they're preliminary drawings and concept drawings, but they, notable in their absence were any bike racks. Bike parking is at as great a premium at our schools as car parking, and yet, I wonder if that is just a, why it doesn't reflect where bike parking will be, especially covered bike parking.
Yeah, there would be bike racks. They're not shown on the plan currently. The plans reflect outside play areas, which are also still somewhat in flux, so the nature of what would be developed there, it will include bike racks, but the components may move around in terms of exact location and nature, and we're working on that with the school district now.
Quick question. So, I noticed that at the Valley Road site and also at the high school, for the sports fields, you designate the sports fields as turf. And do you mean natural turf or astroturf?
No, that would be artificial turf.
Yeah, okay. I mean, one thing that I recently learned, well, I guess within the past year, is that actually astroturf is, actually absorbs a lot of heat and contributes a significant amount to urban heat island effect. And so, I think that that's something that, I understand that astroturfs are maybe easier to maintain, but I think that that's something that you may want to reconsider.
Going back to the topic of bicycling, there are a couple of specific issues I'd like you to either address or consider if you haven't thought about them. One is that the bicycle master plan, which was adopted into the community master plan last year, calls for a connection from the GIO bike lane, which goes along the playing field, across to CP North, because that's a critical connection for the entire western section of town, for students to be able to bike to school, both to JW and to the high school. This would have been nice to do at the time that the pool was redone, but the master plan wasn't adopted at that point. It's something that really should be incorporated into the site plan for Community Park School, and so I'd like you to put that on your list of things to put into the design. The second item is something that's not specifically called for, but I do think that it's worth, it's something that we've talked with Superintendent Cochran about, and there's a lot of interest in the sort of complete streets community in the concept of closing Walnut during school drop-off and pickup times to vehicles other than buses. I think there's a lot of difficulty with the car traffic on Walnut conflicting with and making pedestrians and bicyclists feel unsafe. And, as I say, it's not called for specifically in the bike master plan, but I'd love for you to take a look at whether it's something the school district could support as a way to enhance the campus field between the middle school and the high school, and to make those kinds of alternative transportation function better.
Yeah, that actually has been discussed and will continue to be discussed, both with the district and with the municipality. We've spoken with the police department about it as well. And for your concern about bicycles, I will confess to you that I am a cyclist, so you can be assured I'll be looking out for the interest as we go through the process.
Great.
So, I have another comment. So, last meeting, the issue of EV charging stations came up, and I know that that's getting kind of into the details, but I want to stress this again, that it's extremely critical that EV charging stations are added to parking. We need to allow for these types of vehicles to be parked and charged, so.
Yep, noted. Thank you.
Yes, Jeffrey?
Thanks. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, Chris noted in the memo on page 7, this discussion of the community center that had been looked at in the past, and you also highlighted the community benefits of the 5-6 school. With respect to the connections in the master plan, is the intent to suggest that this school also serves the function that would be identified as the community facility need? Or is it, I mean, are there specific aspects of that that have been incorporated in your design specifically for that reason?
Well, the, and maybe Stephanie can elaborate, there have been discussions about this school serving as or being designed in the direction of being, to a degree, a community school. The definition around what that exactly means is still in flux, but specifically, the spaces I've showed you here, we did design so that they can be as flexible in that regard as possible. They can be isolated from the building, they can be compartmentalized in different ways, plus providing the additional community room space near the entrance and placing the nurse station there, so that visitors could come in, use those facilities, or have access without getting into the school during the day, things like that. Are part of the planning so far, and that planning is ongoing. I don't know if that directly answers your question.
Yeah, I think it does. I had one other question, too, on Community Park School. I know security, insecure access is an important part of your referendum plan, but I also think that drop-off, in particular, at that school, has become really congested, because they've tried to address those security needs. And it looks to me like the plan you've proposed actually makes it, would make the problem, make it more congested. So, I'm wondering, are you intending that all of the students would enter the school via the office? Or would you still be using the current entrance for pickup and drop-off, and then the office access is only during the school day?
No, the secure entrance setups don't, they allow for special use of the buildings and entrance during drop-off and pickup periods, when you have heavy volumes of students arriving. These entrances are designed and instituted primarily for the other periods of the day. So, during the school day and at other times, when you need to restrict visitors, control who has access to the building. But they're not intended to restrict those limited arrival and departure times when the traffic is heavy with students.
Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Olman?
Just sort of one comment and one concern. The comment is that probably a decade ago, I served on a master, the Recreation Department's Master Plan Committee, in which we sent out questionnaires to the entire town, asking about needs and desires for recreational activities. And probably principal among those was a community center, which would have gyms, workout spaces for the whole community. And the site we focused on was the Valley Road School, which has made its way into the master plan, and I would say continues to be of great concern to the adult community, as well as maybe the teenagers or older teenagers. And I think with the university increasingly shutting down its recreational spaces and gyms, that is going to be an even greater need. And in a way, I'm sorry to see it eliminated from this site. The other, that's the comment. The concern I have is that the proposal for the 5-6 grade school will bring over 600, or potentially over 600 children, and probably 100-plus staff members to a spot that has not had that kind of crowd before. It is next door to the fire station, as you mentioned. It is across the street from the Princeton, the rescue, PFRs, the rescue group, both of whom operate on an emergency basis. It is only a few yards away from Community Park School, where there is already a very difficult drop-off and pickup site. And I can't say, in terms of master plan consistency, that this site is ideal for that particular use. I understand why it's being used, but I do think it is going to create considerable traffic problems on that site over the next 10 years. And I think that, to the degree that you could rework the site, perhaps putting the school where the fields are, the fields where the school are, or something that will move the traffic away, might help. But I do think it's a, I mean, I put this really on the table for my colleagues. I think it is going to be a real traffic problem. The buses that circulate through town go right past that spot. It's one of the major roads between the, sort of north and south, and Valley Road is one of the major roads, east and west. Putting a building with that many small kids in it strikes me as problematic. I just wanted to put that on the table.
So, I actually want to pick up on both of Gail's comments. One, in terms of the university closing their recreational facilities to the public. In particular, I'm concerned, the university recently announced that DILL and gym would no longer be available, and the indoor pool, therefore, is not. And I would like to see if it's possible to include some kind of a secure arrangement at the JW pool, so that at times when it's not being used by the school population, it might be available, be able to be made available to the public. And then, in terms of the other comment about the traffic, I think that you're right. I think one mitigating factor is removing the buses, the bus parking from that site may actually offset a little bit your concern, because right now, every day, I guess, every single bus that the community owns is coming in and out of that site.
There will be 12 buses arriving.
Right, but there are a lot more than that now.
And we don't know where they'll be.
That's correct, but hopefully not very close to here. But I really appreciate the comment that you're making, that this is going to be an extremely busy hub in town at the beginning of school and the end of school. I wonder if there's any thought about staggering the schedule for the beginning of school for the 5-6 vis-a-vis the elementary schools, because I know that's something that, just this year, got changed for the high school, the start time and the other schools.
I can't talk to that specific time for the 5-6, but as you mentioned, starting in September, the high school starting time will be later. So, this is kind of a, I guess, a, what? Trent? But that wasn't the word I was thinking of. But it kind of like, I don't want to use the word experiment, because that's not the right word. So, it could be where the rest of the, the first area that's being changed is the high school. So, it's not unheard of that something else could change, too. So, that's a possibility. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the school district works very collaboratively with the rec department, and they use our buildings all the time without a problem. And it is anticipated that they would be using the gym and the locker rooms as well in the 5-6.
Mia?
Yeah, so I sat in when you originally discussed the plans for Valley Road, and I had the impression that there was more of the historic, of the facade that was going to be restored. And I'm just wondering, is it just only this arch is the only thing? And is there some reason for?
Right now, it is just the arch, yes.
And was there some reason why? Because originally, I thought you had described more of the front facade that was going to be saved.
We did look at that as a possibility. There were two concerns, one cost, and the second was the configuration of the building. It was forcing some changes that were resulting in some less-than-ideal educational space in the building itself.
Okay. And I just have one more question, which, given the history of Valley Road and how it was allowed to deteriorate, and just wondering if you can speak to plans for maintaining both Valley Road and all of the expanding facilities? Is there, what is the capacity of the facilities department to maintain both the existing upgrades and the expanded facilities?
Obviously, that would be addressed, and we would have, we have maintenance schedules. The 369 is really, hasn't been touched for years for many reasons. But of course, all new spaces, for the 5-6 school, there would be a maintenance staff. Obviously, it would be maintained every day, and regular scheduled maintenance.
Yes. Mr. Porter?
Yeah, Mr. Downey, I guess in the report, you talked about all the different types of capacity that this department uses. And then, in your graphs on the next set of pages, there's a line that says "capacity." Could you explain to the board which, if any, of those is meant to be reflected by that line?
So, that line reflects the capacity assessment that we had done for the district at the start of this process.
What page are we on? I'm sorry.
Well, I think if you look at the report's pages, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10, there's a line, and then the prior page talks about different definitions.
So that, that capacity number was calculated by looking at the policies in the buildings, or the class sizes the district wanted to operate at, the special needs, and how many classrooms those needs occupied, the schedule at each of the buildings, schedule not being much of a factor when it comes to elementary schools, but much more of a factor when it comes to the middle or the high school. And in fact, at the high school, a very detailed, course-by-course schedule analysis was done to determine the spaces needed to deliver that program, as well as the spaces that were therefore available to support capacity. So the basis for those numbers is in that report that we had prepared. I believe it's actually still posted on the district website. Yes, so the report is available there in full also.
Is that a, is that a variable number? Is that a range of capacity, or this is a straight line?
No, that number represents the capacity based on the current use of the buildings. So if that use were to change, if they were to increase the number of special education rooms at John Witherspoon, for example, then that capacity number would change. But that number reflects the current use of each of the buildings.
You would say that's, that's reality versus the theoretical elements in these conditioners?
That's a good way to put it, yes.
I'm just curious, I'm not sure if this was mentioned, but what is the timeline for, you know, making, for construction or making these improvements? You know, when, when are you looking to start construction on Valley Road and other improvements?
So the timeline varies by component. Should the referendum advance and be successful in October, obviously, immediately design and engineering would begin. The various renovation projects would probably advance with bidding in the early part of the year, and work occurring primarily in the summer. The five, six school, the goal would be to advance it as soon as possible, probably bidding in the spring, with the goal of having that school operational by September of 2020. The high school is going to be a more complex project, and we're anticipating, because of the need to phase that project, piece by piece through the building, to avoid, you know, impacts that are too severe on operations and students, that project would probably take two to three years, with the emphasis on the construction time being in the summer and less during the school year.
So two to three years, starting like as soon as approval?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Ullman?
I'm some distance away from having been in high school myself, but, so if I sound really ignorant, I apologize. I'm looking at page 27, and I'm trying to figure out what flexible learning zones and collaborative hubs and heart are, and why, and why they are included in this particular plan.
So the process that the school district has gone through with the design of specifically the high school and the five, six school, has included a fairly deep dive into how they want to be teaching, or the possibility or the opportunities for teaching and learning moving forward. Teaching and learning are changing. Students now have access to learning and information anywhere, everywhere, on their phones, and, you know, the district has teamed through this process with not just ourselves, but a second architectural firm, and also engaged a world-recognized educator, Heidi Hayes Jacobs, Dr. Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who came in and worked with the district and spoke to them. One of the points that she emphasized is that, you know, students are learning differently, and teachers are teaching differently now. They are trying to do this at the high school, but the problem currently is that the building is, in effect, getting in the way. You know, you have a beautiful building. The high school is a beautiful building, but it's close to 100 years old. And education, if you imagine, you know, if you're going to go see a doctor tomorrow, and you say, "Yeah, my doctor started practicing 100 years ago," and they do it exactly the same way, you would, you might think twice about going to that doctor. Well, education is changing in similar ways, too. Students are doing much more hands-on project learning, so it's not just teacher lectures, "I learned something, I take a test." Teacher delivers a concept, helps me understand that concept. I then do projects with other classes, with other students, to make sure that, you know, I then understand it in depth. I'm developing projects, I'm carrying over what I learned in science to English and math, and so forth. So the spaces you see in the, in the plan are designed to try and create a variety, a much more diverse range of spaces at the high school. So there are some large spaces, for example, the heart has a gathering stair, where three or four math classes might come together briefly at the beginning of a period to have a quick lecture on a key concept. And then they would break up into other spaces and do maybe individual learning, or small class learning, or groups, so forth. So large gathering spaces like that are not really present in the high school now. And at the other end of the spectrum, most of the classrooms at the high school look the same. So the flexible learning zones are taking groups of classrooms and creating some rooms that can be opened up and combined with the room next door, or with a common space, so that a classroom of students can actually, you know, do activities together, but can also break apart and work in small groups, and work in projects with other classes. So the flexible learning zones are a mixture of space, classrooms, common space, small group space. And also, we're creating a series of teacher collaboration rooms. So in many schools, the teachers have their base in the classroom, and those teachers have a prep period and a lunch period, and they have to have time to prepare their lessons and so forth. So that classroom might only be used a six, seven, eight periods because of that. So by creating teacher collaboration spaces, we can give the high school the ability to program a little more tighter in those spaces, make more use of those spaces. But also, the teachers can collaborate more effectively. You know, the, the teachers and the administration at the high school reported to us through this process that it was an interesting benefit, if you will, or fallout, from the need to build the portable units to house the teachers a couple of years ago, is that it put all the teachers in one place, and many of them found that they actually had collaborative opportunities they didn't take advantage of before. So the teacher collaboration spaces are meant to capture that as well on the faculty side.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a few observations and a number of questions, and I won't try to repeat what Ms. Ullman said, but I strongly agree with her comments about the building across the street, and, and the community center concept, and the traffic and use issues, and proximity to other traffic-generating things. But I would like for you to, can I, okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the methodology that you used to, to come up with the projections? They, they, you know, they just seem pretty high, and I know that, you know, people have talked about them and talked about them, but there was one thing that you said that concerned me, and that was that they were based in part on looking back at previous housing trends in Princeton, as well as things that were, and maybe I misunderstood that, but as well as projects that are anticipated. So I'm curious about assumptions that were made about single-family dwellings versus multifamily, and other kinds of things that would have had an effect on the overall projected enrollment increases.
So the, to clarify, what I was speaking to with regard to looking at past trends were, the demographer needed to try and assess, for the COA developments, where there isn't specific information as to the units or the locations, he needed to gauge the number of students that might come from those units. And it was only in that circumstance where he was looking at averages for different types of housing in the municipality, simply because he needed to fill in a gap in terms of estimating the number of students. With regard to specific developments, he looked specifically at the units in those developments, and applied the ratios that are determined by Rutgers as to the, you know, the number of students that can be expected from certain types of units. So where the information was there, he based his projection on the specifics of that information. But in the case of the COA, he at this point knew only largely units, as opposed to the specifics.
And is that based on the assumption that most of the affordable housing will have market-rate housing for units, four-to-one ratio of market-rate housing associated with each COA, each affordable unit?
Yeah, so I can read to you, this is a clarifying statement he provided to the Department of Education, so it's public information since it's been submitted to the department. So he said, "In accordance with the Rutgers multipliers, for future impact of unknown type and mix for COA and related market-rate housing, a blended multiplier is developed from the recent mix of multifamily housing in Princeton, applied to the Rucker multipliers." This is a methodology that he has reported to the Department of Ed. He's been using for 15 years in different municipalities when faced with this situation. So the, there is some additional information in his overall report, which I believe is also on the district website, but which I, I don't unfortunately have here with me.
I guess there are sort of obvious implications for our own decision-making inherent in that set of questions. But I want to talk a little bit now about the potential community use areas in the, that were identified, at least in the Valley Road School location. And I guess I would encourage the, the schools and the municipality to have a very clear, specific, solid agreement about availability of public space, because that can, there are, it's easy to, it's easy for that to just disappear over a fairly short, a mere, fairly short period of time after it's built. And I'm, I don't mean to be accusing anybody of bad faith, it's just that it's very good to have it really clear and in writing, not just for that school, but for the other schools as well that are going to be renovated. I was interested to hear Xenon's comment about astroturf and the heat island effect. I did not know about that, but I do know that ball fields, when constructed a certain way, synthetic fields can soak up a gigantic amount of storm water. So it may just be, you know, that looking at different types of construction and opportunities to turn those sites into real sponges could benefit the broader neighborhood. I know, too, that synthetic fields can be used much, much more heavily than grass fields, and so they obviate the need for a lot more ball fields, and that, that is a good thing. But I would be concerned for a number of reasons about heat island, so I don't mean to dismiss that out of hand at all. And, and with regard specifically to the retention basin that you mentioned at the high school site, and needing to somehow add capacity to that, I, I would just suggest that you look uphill for intervention, you know, places that lend themselves to different kinds of interventions, where you can arrest or capture storm water before it gets to that low spot, in addition to looking at how you can increase capacity in that specific footprint itself. Can you talk a little bit about the fitness center, and what a, what a high school fitness center looks like and is meant to be and do nowadays?
So the fitness center at the high school is an old gym. Currently, if you go into that space, it's primarily weightlifting and some aerobic-type activities. The, the second floor that we're looking to create will allow the school to add additional activities, so there will be more space for aerobic, floor exercise, yoga-type activities, as well as weights. And there will also be the ability to create dedicated space for wrestling, so the mats don't have to constantly be taken up and put down in different areas, as well as sports like fencing that don't have a dedicated place in the school, but have become, you know, very successful in the school. So that area will support a number of activities, which there just isn't floor space for right now, but the second floor and the addition adjacent to it will also provide some additional classroom space in that area.
My mind had just flipped, flitted over to the Vanet Road site, and I'm curious, I know that's not part of what's in front of us today, obviously, although it is somewhat concerning that we, you know, we know the administration and vehicles need to go somewhere, and presumably, that's where they'll go. Has there been any thought at all about co-locating a, a five, six school on that property?
So that was one of the options that was looked at early on in the process, when that property was originally looked at. But the district had moved off of that option and decided on the Valley Road solution that, that we presented here today, because that property at the time had, had fallen off the opportunity list, so to speak. So, you know, its return to the list at this point offers the district an opportunity to be able to transfer administration to a facility that will largely support them. There are some things that have to be done internally, some renovations and upgrades, but it would be a fairly quick way to relocate them. And the five, six school is the, schedule-wise, is the most critical component of the LRFP, of the Long Range Plan that we've outlined here today. Because those students, as you saw from the middle school, which is already severely over capacity, and going to get worse in the coming years, is the most acute situation that we're trying to solve right now.
Okay. I would also add that the superintendent and board felt strongly about having the five, six school at the Valley Road site due to the walkability of it from the neighborhood, bicycling, the closeness to the high school and the middle school, so the location was like...
More central.
More central.
Not to finish your sentence for you. I definitely agree with what Xenon said about EV charging. I think it's really important. Are you, are you building in any budget for unanticipated remediation associated with some of the, either with demolition over, across the street, or with the renovation and retrofitting of the other buildings? Sometimes that can...
Yeah, we have, we have demolition budgets, we also have some abatement budgets at the various schools, and our budgets also include contingency. So it is the nature of a school district going to referendum that the budget that the district is presenting to the public is effectively a maximum number. They were going, they're going to the public to ask permission to spend not a dollar more than that. So obviously, the goal is not to spend those contingencies, but they are in the budget currently.
Luis, can Tim jump in for a few minutes?
Oh, sure, yeah, I just have a couple more, but I...
Go ahead, Tim.
So we're being asked to consider the, the Long Range Facilities Plan here that seems based entirely on the approval by the voters of the referendum. What does, can the district chair at this point what the contingency plan would be if the referendum was, was not approved by, by the voters, and...
Well, the, we'd have to, we'd have a problem, particularly for the immediate need of the middle school... of the middle school and the five-six school. Options that can be put in are trailers, that just solve immediate overcrowding. Then what we'd have to do is go back out again for referendum, because the needs are there. You know, would the plan be reconfigured possibly, or possibly the same plan put out again? But in the meanwhile, trailers or increasing class size. It could be trailers or increased class sizes, or other additional, well, we already put in trailers for the administration, so, you know, we'd have to go in that avenue.
And a hypothetical could be the five-six school at Vanet in that case, if you had to go, you would have to basically start over, go back to the drawing board, and I would imagine that would involve some scaling back of the plan that's being presented here, and then other options would be placed on the table. And I think it'd be good for the board to know what that timetable would look like in terms of the resubmission and what the calendar, if you could just give us the quick, if it's possible to do.
So, under the scenario you're suggesting, where the, where a change of that magnitude might be considered, it would probably mean the delay of a year in the process. It would require the district to start over again with the Department of Education and the full submission and development process. Being a different site, it may elicit also a different school design, so the time associated with that would also be involved. Thank you.
So I just have a quick question, because I feel like we probably should leave some time for the public to comment. But I was just curious, like, you know, is it not a possibility to just use the school as is, and maybe it's too small, or it's not, you know, modern, is it modern enough?
Well, it's a little bit of both, primarily its size, however. We did actually look at what we would be able to do in the school in its current state, and, you know, there just is not enough space and capacity there. The school as it's laid out is not as flexible as the proposed design, so, you know, you really just have fairly traditional classrooms there, and there's a fairly limited capacity in terms of what we would be able to do on that site.
But what if you were just to have like sixth grade there? I mean, if the issue is the middle school, I mean, wouldn't it make sense to, you know, put the sixth grade there, and wouldn't that be solid?
Well, the most urgent issue is the middle school. The elementary schools, however, also are rising in enrollment and will be over capacity. And the elementary schools have also made sacrifices in the past, where special program spaces were ceded, or general instruction space and special programs were ceded to general instruction space. So some of those things will be able to be undone when the fifth grade is pulled out. And there is also, again, while the department only considers five-year projections, the district tries to look out further, and there is talk of increased early childhood instruction around the state and so forth. So the district is trying to consider options that would give it a little bit of flexibility in that regard.
Additionally, I might add that if you asked the superintendent of schools that question about just placing the sixth grade there, he would not, he would not think that was a good move. Educationally, the fifth and sixth grade together are a perfect maturity level and educational level, so I can't speak specifically for him, but I believe that he would say that he wouldn't support just one grade there.
Okay, Louise, you have some more questions?
I think, I think I have just one more. And it's an observation and a question, I guess. There are, this referendum's really big, big dollar figure, and lots and lots of different schools, lots of locations of work, complicated, you know, construction as well as retrofitting, and, you know, every school affected. And I'm wondering whether or not you have a project manager, whether you're going to hire a professional to manage all of this and have somebody to hold accountable for timeframe and budget and stuff, and not expect existing school staff to do that work?
No, the school staff is not expected to manage the construction. We've included in the budget money to hire other professionals, construction manager and so forth, that would be part of the process, should the referendum succeed.
Can you just, can you speak a bit about the topic of sustainability? What you decided to include in the ESIP and what is not included in the ESIP in terms of HVAC, and why you made those decisions?
Sure. So in evaluating the needs at the various buildings, we also identified components of those needs that we felt might be a fit for an ESIP project. For the board, an ESIP project is a self-funding project, where the components, renovation and improvement components that save energy, that in their aggregate can pay for themselves within 15 years or less, can be packaged into what is called an ESIP, an Energy Savings Improvement Plan or Program. The advantage of an ESIP is that the district then does not have to go to referendum and put the capital out upfront. You know, there's a plan and approval process with the Board of Public Utilities, where you confirm that those improvements will in fact pay for themselves. So we have identified the potential for approximately $19 million or so of improvements that might fit into an ESIP. The only way to know for sure on balance is to conduct an energy study, an energy assessment of the district, so that we can understand what the payback and return would be on those improvements. But generally, the ones that we identified consisted of lighting, a range of HVAC and ventilation equipment upgrades, hot water pump systems, some building control systems and so forth. So on balance, we felt like the mix, based on our experience, we've, you know, our firm has implemented about 10 ESIPs. So based on our experience, we felt some of those components, lighting in particular, can pay for itself very quickly, some of those others, hot water systems, pump systems and so forth, would probably be more than 15 years. But on aggregate, our goals to be 15 years or less. So the next step to advance that would be the energy assessment, and then we would determine exactly what can fit into that ESIP.
I know that the district has been, has had a plan to have the energy audit done for several years now, and it hasn't occurred. I'm just wondering, do you know if it is on the schedule? Is it, can you speak to when it will actually take place, since it is essential for going forward with the ESIP?
It is essential for going forward with an ESIP. Our recommendation would be that the district pursue it through the local government energy audit program.
Right.
So it doesn't cost them money, and, but that has not yet been initiated.
And do we know why?
No, it has been initiated. We just haven't had the group to come and do the audit yet. We're in their queue. I don't have a time for it. They have all the documentation they need from us, so now we're on their schedule, but I don't know exactly when that is.
So, sorry, one other last thing, on a related note. I know that this is beyond kind of the scope of, you know, the schools, but I know that the town is interested in doing a microgrid, and I was wondering if there was any thought into preparing for that in terms of how, because this microgrid, if it happens, a lot of these schools would probably be a part of that. So has anything thought has been put into that?
It's been discussed with the district, but no specific plan at this point that I'm aware of. The, it certainly is a possibility, but at this point, I don't know that there are any details developed, not just by the district or the other parties that are discussing that yet.
Yes, Jeffrey?
I wondered, I think partly because of the cost of the five-six school in particular, you know, one of the things that you, questions I've heard in the community is, you know, why don't we just add on to each of the elementary schools and the middle school? But it seems to me, and I think Steve Cochran made this point also in a presentation, that a five-six school is, you know, you get the efficiency of having one big construction project instead of five, and it's also, you know, not at a school, not at a current school site, so that you're not, you can do it during the school year and not interrupt the instruction. And so I guess what I was wondering is, can you speak a little bit to how you see those trade-offs? And I mean, do you, you know, how seriously did you consider additions to all of the schools, and like, how would that compare to what's being proposed?
So we did look at the possibility of, considered the possibility of additions at the various schools. There are a couple of trade-offs there. First of all, we'd be talking about adding enough space that, the sites are all different in terms of the ones that have space and don't have space. So the additions would probably have to occur at several facilities, they would probably be large enough in terms of adding the number of students, that it wouldn't just be classrooms, it would also be support space, gym space might need to be added, cafeteria space, teacher and special instruction space as well. So the additions would be sizable at the various schools, and because each site does not allow for equal expansion, would also result in the redistricting of the neighborhood schools that are currently exist in Princeton, and that was very much a concern to the district. So that was also a big negative that weighed on the consideration of that.
I wanted to ask, this is probably a question that should have been asked much earlier. You must have a philosophical outlook about replacing schools over the years in Princeton. I mean, for the first time, when you're talking about tearing down Valley Road and putting in this new school, that's, that's a major step. But when you look at the group of schools that are targeted for this referendum, they were all essentially built in a 20-year period. They're all aging at about the same rate. I have no idea whether they're structural marvels or not. I know, for instance, that a couple of them were built exactly at the same time, when the district was really desperate. And I've begun to wonder, you know, when your 30 years are up on this referendum, these schools will be nearly 100 years old. These, these belong to the period of construction and design that, you know, it's beyond mid-century modern. The houses and the developments in the neighborhoods that went with these neighborhood schools are vanishing rapidly. They're being replaced by houses that other people feel are more efficient or more suitable for their needs, and yet the school district seems committed to coaxing these buildings along and so on. I just wondered whether at any point there was a thought that you should really plan on replacing schools from time to time? No?
Well, school replacements are looked at, and those are things that were considered when the various options were considered. The schools themselves are, you know, they're not falling apart, they're not poorly maintained, but the, they have needs that have outpaced what the district can do on a maintenance basis, not the least of which is the type of educational space that in many cases they contain, that has become outdated. So the, you take a school such as the high school, you know, considering replacing a building of that size is a fairly costly endeavor, and in my opinion, not necessary. You know, the adaptation we're proposing will create a range of flexible contemporary educational space in the building, and it will still look and feel like Princeton High School. So, you know, the schools in the district are not at a point where they need to be, you know, thrown away and replaced, they are still adaptable, and that is, right now, the most cost-effective way to move forward.
Well, I've sat through a number of meetings like this over a number of years, and each time you come in and add a little bit more, move something, so on, and I really sincerely wonder how long that process can go on. But you make, you made a case for it again, and I hope it will last for the 30 years that you've outlined. Anybody else? Yes, I think we've got some very patient members of the public sitting here, so why don't I open the meeting for public discussion? Since we've got a fair number of people here, I'm going to limit you to about three minutes, and you come up to the podium, give your name, and be sworn in.
Okay. Heidi Fiktembaum, 38, Carnahan Place.
Yes, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully, to the extent you're providing testimony?
I affirm that. I actually just have a couple of questions. One is, it does feel like, to me, that this is like everything in the kitchen sink, right? It's a really far-reaching referendum, touching every single building and multiple aspects, from playing fields to HVAC to, you know, every kind of intervention and repair. And in my view, it, what it feels like is that there's a lot of deferred maintenance that is being folded into these capital improvements. And in my view, those are two different things. So as a member of the public, while I might support some capital improvement, if we're exceeding our capacity, I'm not so sure that I would be willing to vote for all the deferred maintenance that's being folded into this right now. And that just kind of goes to my comment. My next question is, do you have a 10-year operating pro forma for this project that you're proposing, and can you share that with the public? Because if you don't have that, then we're really not looking at all the costs that are involved in running and maintaining these facilities. And if we're adding deferred maintenance now, because we can't keep up with the buildings that we have, and we're building even more buildings, I'm not sure how they last for 30 years. That's one. And my other question is, if we are going to work on all these other buildings, and we are reaching to get LEED certification for the new building, why are we not also looking to get LEED existing building certification for all our existing buildings? And the reason we would do that is because I believe that they suffer from a lot of problems that have to do with, you know, energy and HVAC and all of that. And this would be a way of properly commissioning those buildings, which they are in dire need of. And that way, as we move forward, we could really be taking a comprehensive approach to sustainability and making sure that whatever we install in our buildings really operates as it should.
Thank you.
Hi, Molly Jones. I'm a resident at 273 Hamilton and the executive director of Sustainable Princeton. So I abide by the oath of what has been stated.
You swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Thank you.
I just want to touch on a couple of points that have been articulated, but I just wanted to add additional exclamation marks. Stormwater, that wasn't a single time that in this entire presentation, stormwater was identified as a focus, a concern. There were a number of ways that it was going to be managed that were identified in the LEED building, but what I heard proposed that we're talking about an increase of impervious surfaces from 30 to 40% on the... of impervious surfaces from 30 to 40% on the Valley Road property. Um, I would encourage, um, consideration of pushing for more pervious or porous pavement so that we deal with the stormwater. I also would encourage the school district to take a look at the university and some of the innovative ways that they are managing stormwater through their, um, sports fields. So particularly the turf fields, um, looking at how you can, uh, build some gravel, uh, stormwater management under those. We know the Valley Road site, we actually have some photo documentation that that is a sensitive area. So I think being very cognizant of the water, we know it's a problem already at the high school, so looking at how do we use those fields, how do we use this space for that? Um, I wanted to, um, encourage the planning board that if, if this Valley Road building is going, uh, forward as LEED, that we make sure that it's, or encourage that it's actually commissioned so that it gets up, um, running and is a tested facility. Then parking, it was mentioned that the new facility, again, is going to go from 87 to 119 spots. If we build it, they will come, so let's not build it. I would very much encourage that we start building our school properties to be looking forward to the 21st century, not by building for the single car driving family of the 20th century. So we should be thinking about car share, bike share, walking and biking, as has been articulated. Then finally, I just wanted to make the point about the energy efficiency manners. Uh, we're definitely fully in support of the ESIP, um, that's been discussed, but want to just encourage that maintenance is, is critical. You can build these high efficiently, efficiency systems, but without, um, very thoughtful maintenance, maintenance of the current symptoms, uh, staff that's heavily trained in how to, um, monitor these systems, it will all be, um, for, for not. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nat Bodigheimer of the 26 White Pine Lane in Princeton, and I affirm to tell the truth to the extent that whatever I say is testimony. Uh, so, uh, first comment is just sort of a procedural one, which is that, um, I'm just, it's difficult to come up with comments that we want to make because the materials that we were going to be, I mean, we haven't seen the materials that you were going to, uh, be presented on this evening, and I understand you've, you've probably had a couple of days to review them. We've just been here in the presentation. Some of the materials have doubtless been online, but without indication of what materials were being presented tonight, since a lot of them have changed over time, it's just difficult to come up, uh, to be prepared to comment. The second thing is, I just wanted to echo a comment that I heard before, I'm just, I, I, I'm not really sure how the planning board is going to be prepared to, to make a judgment on what it's heard tonight. This is a tremendous amount of information, and it seems just very rapid, uh, for you to take in the information and, and process it. That's just, you know, cloud thought over my head. Second, uh, third thing, one of the things that I've been really pleased with the council and the planning board over the last year or two is the increasing sensitivity in all, you know, in many regards, uh, to how, how planning, how programs are affecting, you know, the missing middle and affecting affordable housing in the community. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry that I, I don't get the sense that that is a concern of the schools. Um, I think that contributing to the well-being of the entire community is an important responsibility if there's not just provide facilities for students. Uh, and that's, echoes some of the comments that I've heard a number of you make, uh, about sustainability, about bicycle pedestrian design, about automobile designs, uh, and generally about, um, design in general, connecting, for example, the Thanet Properties to, um, the North Harrison Street Shopping Center so that you don't have to see what I saw the other day, which is, you know, a Churchill and Dwight pickup truck there because somebody's driving from that property to the shopping center. It's so close as the bird flies, uh, this really should be as so close as the bird walks as well. And that's something that I think is in the purview of the planning board to ask, uh, be part of everything that is a part of the, uh, the school building program, and whether that's at the Thanet Property or at Valley Road or at the high school as well. I will comment specifically about the, the design of the, uh, kids' drop-off at Valley Road as proposed. Uh, it, it's just exactly the kind of design that when I was at the transit agency in Washington DC, we knew the people who were doing kids' ride drop-offs would never follow that S-turn to drop people off. No one's ever going to pull past the entrance to go all the way to the front of the queue. Uh, to say that that's 600, you know, feet of queue, that's linear feet of curb, but effectively, that is not what's going to happen at all. Uh, so I really think that that needs to be reconsidered. That is not, the way you've designed it to be used is not how it's going to be used. Uh, and then I would just add, uh, to, and, and that, that's just based on seeing how people drop people off at transit facilities and schools. Um, and then the third is, just to echo some of the comment that I heard earlier from, uh, Board Member Cohen and others, I think, uh, it's really important to design these facilities to give priority to pedestrians, walk, kids who are walking, kids who are bicycling, uh, and to really live our priorities of saying, you know, those are going to be prioritized above automobile. You can drive your car to school, but you may need to pay. You may even want to link, uh, parking fees to, uh, to the facilities improvement plan. You may want to link it to specifically to sustainable investments as part of the school program, uh, but make it free to bike and walk, make it cost to, to park, and make it a little bit more difficult to drop people off. Maybe kids have to walk the last three blocks on their own. Um, so, uh, just some thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kip Cherry, 24 Dempsey.
Miss?
I do.
You do. Swear or affirm to testify truthfully? Thank you.
I have a few comments to make that are overall, and then I want to address a couple of issues with the master plan in particular. First of all, uh, all of these schools will be affected by this, uh, plan. Every school will have disruptions. Every school will have renovations. So don't think that this is a small thing. This is huge. This is going to affect the entire school system. Secondly, we're talking about flexible teaching. We're talking about new teaching techniques. Again, huge. Thirdly, we're talking about busing the fifth graders to the fifth and sixth school. Some of them can walk, but many, most will be bused. That's new. New buses on the road. Third, the intersection of Witherspoon and Valley Road. This has already been brought up, but I just want to mention it again. We're talking about a lot of activity at that intersection and along Witherspoon Street. We're talking about congestion that is already there. We're talking about emergency vehicles. I can see some major problems with that general area. And that relates, obviously, to the master plan. Four, enrollment and capacity. I think a lot of us have a lot of concerns about the projections on enrollment and also on the calculations regarding capacity, and we would like to see this peer-reviewed. We shouldn't just go with one opinion. We need to make sure we know what, what we're doing. And also the timing. If there is increased enrollment, what is the timing? Uh, in the projections, the high school enrollment increase begins around 2022. That gives us some time to think about what we're doing, but we are feeling all very rushed. And I don't think that we make our best decisions when we're really rushed. And what we're doing is, we're setting up a situation so that in 30 years' time, everything comes to a point again. All of our school facilities come to a point, we will have paid off the bond issue, and all of a sudden, everything that needs to be done will all of a sudden be on the platter of whoever is left standing in 30 years. Finally, I'd like to comment, uh, or not finally, but I'd like to comment too on the building program. The building program is the essence of the design. Everything starts with a building program that in a narrative describes the space that's needed. I think that the building program is very deficient. I don't see any evidence that it was highly vetted by the faculty. They received presentations, but that doesn't mean that they were heavily involved, and the students weren't that heavily involved, if at all. There was a student survey taken of the high school. 500 kids participated in the survey. Their first priority was HVAC. Their second priority was security. Their third priority was collaborative spaces. And by collaborative spaces, they meant spaces where they could fabricate things as a team, like robots, that kind of thing. Fourth, they wanted smaller rooms. Now, you can take bigger rooms and make them, and divide them up and make them smaller. You don't necessarily have to put addition on or do something different. So they characterized it as desiring smaller rooms. So there are a lot of questions. So finally, just going through some of the issues, uh, with the master plan. I have real concerns about need. I have real concerns about housing because it all relates to enrollment and where we go with our affordable housing and what the need really is. Circulation, I have a major concern about that. I just mentioned the Witherspoon Street issue. Historic preservation. I was led to believe that the limestone arch would remain where it is now and would be incorporated into the building. This is total news, that it's going to be relocated and become some kind of a piece of the landscape that kids walk through. That's not historic preservation. Valley Road School has a major history. It was built in 1918. It was the beginning of where we are now. It was the first integrated regional school. It means a lot, and I'd like to see more of it, uh, maintained in the new building. We're talking about a million dollars to tear down the current Valley Road School. At the very least, we could include the newer addition in the new school. So I don't think we're thinking very magitively, and as I said, there's some kind of a bait and switch going on because that, uh, that arch was to be saved. And finally, on energy efficiency, there are two, uh, atria, one in each of the, uh, the high school and in the, uh, fifth, sixth school. They're both called hearts. They're supposed to be the center of the building. I have real questions about the efficiency of these hearts, whether they're good space for teaching at all. They're huge spaces, and I think they should be really rethought out, and I think they're extremely inefficient, inefficient in cost, and inefficient in energy usage. And very finally, I'm concerned about diversity. I'm concerned about who we are, because as our taxes go up, there are going to be fewer and fewer people who can stay in our community. We're talking about a lot of money, $130 million in capital alone. That doesn't cover the operating expense. We don't know what the new, what the operating expense is going to be for the new fourth, fifth and sixth grade. We've asked for that number repeatedly. That is a permanent tax increase. It's not a 30-year increase. It's a permanent increase, and there are going to be many people in this town who can't afford to stay here because they're being pushed out. It'll also mean that a lot of the capital money that could be used by the municipality or the county will already be used up by the school district because nobody can afford to pay for anything more. So this is really huge for our community, and I hope that we're going to take a little more time to think about the implications. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Chorney, Ray Street.
Yeah. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully to the extent you're providing testimony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, first, I appreciate listening to all of the very thoughtful comments, um, and questions asked by the planning board tonight. Um, you really addressed some very important topics, and I appreciate it coming from all of you, so thank you. Uh, and I'm really going to echo every one of the public comments thus far, so I, I won't be long, but especially Heidi and Molly's comments. One of my biggest concerns, um, is who is looking at the current facilities and how they're being monitored and cared for, and the need to give the facility staff a framework for basic improvements. The current buildings have not exactly been maintained to a progressive health and sustainability standard, and I worry that the changes proposed will just lead to a perpetuation of more poorly maintained and monitored buildings. I'm referring to things like pesticide use, cleaning chemicals, lead, temperature regulation, and energy audits and efficiency, waste management, those type of things, that will be an ongoing issue with the new structures. So, as Heidi said, asking for LEED certification for existing buildings would help to give the facilities department a framework and tools that might be able to better use the improvements. And I think the aesthetics and some of the athletic changes that are being proposed, again, some of these more sustainable efforts might be a better bang for our buck. Um, and I'd have to say that I, I don't feel the school, the rec department, and the town are working together as efficiently as they could, and certainly, if something like this referendum should go through, then that ha, that can't continue to happen. Those three entities really need to work together, and I'll include the university in that as well. And then, again, echoing the, the board and the public, I'm not in favor of turf. I don't think it's healthy. Um, is there a plan for recycling the materials of the torn-down buildings? Um, the bike connections and covered bike lots are really important. EV charging stations, the arches, I agree. Um, we were led to believe that there'd be more preservation of the Witherspoon Street facade, um, and increase in community use of the, of the school buildings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joel Schwartz, SCHWARTZ. I live at One Armor Road. Uh, I have a couple of procedural questions.
Mr. Schwartz, to the extent you're providing testimony rather than questions, do you swear or affirm to testify?
I do. I do so swear. Thank you. Um, I made it a point to stop by the planning office yesterday to review the materials that would be presented tonight, and I went through the entire box. One thing I did not see was the PowerPoint presentation that was made tonight. Is that something was supposed to have been available to the public prior to tonight's meeting?
Not, not necessarily. This is their app, this is their presentation tonight.
Okay.
Uh, we asked that if they were doing that, that they give us copies at least in advance of the presentation tonight, and we received them tonight.
One of the reasons I asked that specifically is, like, some of the other, uh, people from the public, I had attended presentations where representations were made about how the Valley Road, Witherspoon facade was going to be in, uh, included in the five, six school, and tonight was the first time I ever saw physical evidence, visual evidence presented that that's not to be the case, and that, uh, I would have appreciated the opportunity to know about that earlier, to have been, you know, prepared myself more about that. Second question I have that you don't need to answer tonight, but I thought might be relevant. I, I've lived in Princeton for 38 years. This is the first time I, I can remember being at such a planning board hearing or a, a long-range facilities hearing. I may have missed them in the past. My understanding is that these are mandated by, um, state DOE regulations, supposed to take place on regular intervals, I believe every five years. So this is news to me. I think it would be helpful for everyone in the community to just know the background. Is this our first one? Is this our fortieth one? Um, again, it's an open question, but I think it's one that's worth answering.
Third.
Third. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, there were comments made in Mr. Downey's presentation about demographics, and, um, he alluded to Rutgers multipliers, which all the demographers in the room are familiar with. These are standard multipliers that apply in any of the 566 communities in New Jersey. What I found conspicuously absent from the demographic information is no comments were made about communities like Avalon and Stanworth. And the reason I mention those, as you all know better than me, we're about to, um, plan for a large number of new developments in town, many of which will be inclusionary, many of which will be remarkably similar in concept and demographic mix to both Avalon and Stanworth. It would seem to me, if someone wanted to know, uh, what school, what school, public school children are going to result in Princeton as a result of our 753 approximately new housing units, affordable units, rather, that looking at those communities for which, um, we have all of that information, all of you, um, all the students who, who attend public schools, who live at Stanworth, um, that information is known by the Board of Ed. Likewise, for Avalon, and that would allow us to be able to play much more specific plans for what's going to happen. for what's going to happen, both in terms of forward planning for the schools, in terms of forward planning for this planning board, and for the town government. I'm assuming, having attended many similar events at the board and having read all the materials, and having seen no reference to any of that actual on-the-ground, actual Princeton demographic information, that that hasn't been done. I urge you, the Board of Education, and the town, to generate that information to help facilitate a more detailed, granular, specific plan. A number of board members made comments in the general tenor of questioning the, I don't mean to put words in people's mouths, but questioning that your task is to evaluate, for example, with regard to the five, six school, the suitability of Valley Road site for that school, or the suitability of the site plan as proposed. And it occurred to me that many of the comments which were made about maybe it's not quite as suitable as it might be would probably not be made if the site for the five, six school were at Westminster Choir College. As many of you know, that was once upon a time considered as a site. As all of us know, there's a lot of land there, and one of the logics of that site is that half of the students are already there at John Witherspoon. So from the point of view of the traffic concerns that were raised by several of you, it would seem that the Westminster site would be a really great site to look at. We all know it's complicated, but we all know all of this is complicated, so I would urge you all to look at that once again. I have one last comment. Several you commented about the, many people have commented about the turf versus the AstroTurf. I would urge you all to look at that issue more closely. My work is as a developer and as an architect. I had occasion twenty-five years ago to construct three football fields in Hillsborough to the standards of a very highly active youth football program. And one of the requirements was that they, having practiced on and played on substandard fields, they wanted a field which, if there was a downpour in the morning, there could be a kickoff at twelve noon. And we built three fields out of earth to that standard. I agree with many of the sentiments that were raised by people about the ability to store water underneath, but it's certainly possible with thoughtful construction to be able to meet the performance standard that I just mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mary Clerman, Harris Road. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
As I always do. I'd like to speak to the public aspect of this hearing. I very much appreciate the opportunity for the public to hear, and for you as officials to hear the testimony of the public, because there has been a great deal of public input at the Board of Education meetings, but very little of it has been heard by all of you. And what you're hearing tonight is some of that. Much of it has been very critical, but very little of it has been acknowledged directly by the school board itself. There have been changes in procedure, but there has been no statement of appreciation for the input. There's been no recognition of the specific ideas that were offered, and there's been no discussion of those ideas. I think the suggestion that the PowerPoint should be public is a very good one. I think perhaps it can be made public after the meeting. Maybe Scott can tell us whether it might be put on the web, or whether it might be handed out in some way.
Yeah, I've already mentioned to Stephanie. I'll give her a copy, that they can post it on the district website.
And Stephanie, where will that be made public? No, maybe I'm asking on the web or... Okay, on the school board website, and we'll be able to find it? It's difficult to navigate that site.
It will be under the main website, under the referendum log, and it will also be under Board Docs, under Libraries.
Great, thank you. And finally, I'd like to say that the thing that I'm concerned about most in this whole proceeding for this school is that, in my understanding, schools are designed for children and for teaching and for learning, and therefore for families, and therefore for the community. The schools are not designed for the administrators. The administrators are supposed to respond to the community. And I would say that the most important thing that should come out of this hearing is that the Board of Education, which has never been legally required to report to the community, should expect to do so in the future always and relentlessly, and should spend time doing that with the community. In other words, discussing, not having town hall meetings that are meant to be public and meant to be for feedback from the public, but are in fact platforms for the Board of Education, simply to repeat what it has said in the past, but actually to listen and to give feedback in return of conversation. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming forward, let me close the public portion, and... I think we're at the point where we decide on the kind of memo that we're going to write, the resolution that we're going to write. Whether it's a resolution, or I guess the question, the first question is, does, I guess, although it was stated as a mandate that the board report to the commissioner, it's actually not a mandate, it's an opportunity. The Land Use Law says we have the right. For the first, I guess, basic question, does the board wish to exercise that right to give comments to the commissioner, notwithstanding the timing issues?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is, what do you want to say?
Can I just ask, I mean, there was a lot of interesting discussion here related to the referendum, but I feel like we didn't actually really discuss a lot of the things that were, we didn't discuss a lot of the things that were in the memo about how we were supposed to evaluate.
Well, I think it's, I mean, there's a technical side, which we should abide by, but it's fluid as well. The one thing that we should be clear on, we're not, this is not a hearing on the referendum. It's on the plans that were presented. We're a land use board. I mean, there were comments that were made that really, I think, were directed to the school board as to what it should do in the future and what it's done in the past, as opposed to, really, we should focus on the land use issue, and that's where the memo has directed us. So I'd suggest now's the right time for giving us and Chris the input for putting together the report we want to make on the land use issues. And I guess it's been not said, but what the statute says is that we should review the long-range facilities plan in the context of the land use element and the housing element. And we do have a land use element, but we really have a housing element that's in flux. And that's a given. And so we really are not able, we may not be able to make a statement other than that our land use element, our housing element is in flux. Our problem with that issue is the same one that the school board has, to the extent they're required to tell us how it complies with those two elements. They've guessed at it, and those are those COA numbers that are in the, presumably in the demographer's report. So that, I'm just stating what is, right? I mean, that's the situation we find ourselves in. It's a situation that the, at this point in time, the school board finds itself in, and whatever that means for us and for them and for our report.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's like a very critical piece to this because, you know, they have their estimates, and, you know, we're in the process of, you know, determining our estimates through the housing element. And I really think that we can't really make any decisions until we know from our side. And, I mean, I think that we should probably be letting the commissioner know that, you know, no decision should be made until we are in sync.
I have a suggestion for some language relative to that, which is basically, I would indicate that the projections that are in the long-range facility plan are not updated to the current status of the affordable housing plan as we believe it's going to be submitted. It's unclear whether the discrepancies will have a material impact on the needs for space in the schools, and the final numbers should be monitored going forward.
Yeah, I think David's got it right. I mean, I think we preface whatever we say by the things we don't know, and one of them is that we do not have an approved affordable housing obligation yet. So everybody is making their best guess as to what the projections are, and it's probably as reasonable to accept the sunrise. Is it sunrise or sunset? Which is...
Sunrise.
What is the assisted living? What is...
Sunrise.
Anyhow, never mind. But I also think that we are hampered in various ways, and that's partly because the reports have come through in overlapping, with overlapping provisions. So the June fourteenth one is our most recent one. It does not provide for administrative buildings or for buses. And as Alan has said, we don't have jurisdiction over the buildings. But I would like to at least say, with regard to the buses...
Just compare jurisdiction.
Oh, whatever you want to call it.
Over the office element.
But whatever we say about the buses, I would like to say that they not be parked at the Valley Road site. Anywhere else, I'm all right with. And then, I mean, I think we can complement many aspects of this in terms of the security provisions that are being installed. In many cases, there are updating of mechanical elements. Some ways, they're being modernized. I would like to suggest to the board that we do at least comment on the difficulties of the location of the Valley Road School and the heavily trafficked and congested area. I'll leave that up to you all to see whether you think that's worth commenting on. It may be that relocating the building on that site could be helpful. It may be that at some point, it seems to be possible, another site will appear, but I would just, I think that's a complicated site for the purposes of the town as a whole. And...
I agree with that.
It's up to my colleagues to sort of tell me whether they think that is worth saying.
Does anyone want to comment on that issue, on the assumption that something is going to happen there that is also maybe equally or may have more or less congestion elements? I mean, we can't assume it's going to stay in its current state. I don't have a comp, I mean, I think it just should be addressed if you're...
I would like to comment on it, and I think it's a good point. I think I have a slightly different perspective. I live on the corner of Valley and Walnut, so I see the traffic at this location every day. I walk to school to community park. And I think, you know, it is a location that has a lot of uses, but I also think that the road capacity in the location with 206 and Valley Road and Witherspoon are comparatively able to handle larger amounts of traffic, and in fact, that's one reason that the P-FAR has located that, or selected that location. I also think that, and Mr. Schwartz kind of alluded to this indirectly in his comments, I think that, you know, he mentioned that the Westminster Choir College is an attractive site because a lot of the students are already there. I mean, if you think about the Valley Road location, you know, a quarter of your fifth graders are already there. And in fact, a lot of the, I mean, the sixth graders at the middle school are close, and I think one of the values of this location is that you actually will have a lot of students from all parts of the community that would be able to bike, or in some cases, walk to the location. And I think, you know, comments were made that we should make sure that facilities for pedestrians and bikers are factored in. I think that that's huge. But I think if you compare it, for example, to the Thanet Road location, I think there you'd actually have more buses to get students to that location than you would to get them to the Valley Road site. So that would be my thoughts on that.
It just, I mean, there goes without saying, to be clear, the writer Westminster is not before us as a site. It may or may not be available. So I'm not sure we, I guess we can comment about it, but it's really board's choice.
Yeah, I was just borrowing his idea, not the actual site itself.
I wanted to address Mia's initial question, which is that we haven't gone through the items in the memo one by one. For my part, I did go through the items in the memo one by one. I only commented on ones where I felt there was a discrepancy between the master plan and the long-range facility plan. So I don't know how other people feel about it, but I think in general, you know, my comment, my feedback to the commissioners would be that I think the long-range facility plan is largely in, is consistent with the master plan, with specific comments that have been made throughout the course of the evening, addressing issues of energy efficiency in the various buildings, bicycle and pedestrian access, shared facility use. You know, those are some of the really sustainability issues, yeah. And I may be glossing over one or two of the substantive comments that were made, but I think those were the ones that were important to me.
Circulation? You're satisfied?
Yeah, I mean, so this question of the congestion of the five, six location is something that does trouble me, as I mentioned, but I think Jeff just made some good points. I'm not sure that there's a better location. I do think the infrastructure there is pretty robust in terms of being able to handle it. And, you know, there may be some tweaks to the design. I think moving the building is very tough and, you know, while preserving the playing field, so I don't want to dictate, you know, what the resolution is, but I think we certainly can include in our comments that while there is concern about the intensity of use in that sector of town, we see advantages for it as well, and the board was mixed.
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Oh, okay. Question for Chris. So we started this discussion talking about the land use element... So we started this discussion talking about the land use element and the housing element. And obviously, the housing element is up in the air. But you say in your memo that other such elements of the municipal master plan, as the planning board themes, necessary to determine whether the prospective sites for school facilities contained in the long-range facilities plan promote more effective and efficient coordination of school construction with the development efforts of the municipality. So I read that long excerpt to get to the question. Does that include the re-exam report that you referenced later? Is that up for our comment in whatever report we file to the... So, I mean, it talks about elements of the master plan and then we talk about what's in the re-exam, which is, for the planning board's purposes, the most up-to-date information. So is that, can that go into a report to the commissioner? Then I would suggest that we, that we include the comments about the shared facility for the garage and vehicle storage and the public works function. We heard from several members of the public who expressed concern about maintenance of, of new and upgraded and existing facilities. And it seems to me that we're at a point in the municipality where we should start to look more at sharing facilities functions. And that's mentioned in the, in the re-exam report under the section that I quoted, page seven of 13. So if that's allowable, I would say we should, that should definitely make it in, express our concern that the public feels that, you know, from the comment that, from public comment, that there are really questions about the ability to maintain the, not only the, the new buildings and additions that are planned, but there seems to be concern that we're not doing a great job of maintaining the existing structures, so.
So that was my comment, exactly.
I was just looking for a place in the master plan where we could get it in.
But you said it much more articulately, and I just had two, I wanted to add two other things. One, some comment about land use goals. Let's see, it's number nine. Encourage historic preservation, support the preservation of historic buildings and sites. I just want to reiterate, I'm very disappointed with the little arch that's remaining in Valley Road and stuck somewhere in a path. I don't think that that is in keeping with what is described here. I, I don't even know what the point of that is, but, but anyway. And then also, under circulation goals, one A, reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles. I don't think we heard anything about the plans for the high school and student parking that would speak to that, to an improvement in that.
Yeah, I would also add, if it's possible, to include in the letter the issues that were raised about sustainability and energy efficiency, you know, achieving lead for all the facilities and, you know, green infrastructure, stormwater management. Yeah, I think that, surprised that that slipped my mind. I mean, I know that we're not kind of reviewing the site plan, but, you know, the new building is pretty much double what the older one is. And so I think that, you know, that is a, is a big issue, so.
Being sensitive though to the fact that doing lead for existing buildings on all of the buildings will add significant costs and the community is already reeling from the size of the, of the referendum, so I'd like to see it done too. I was thinking maybe if we can recognize some savings through the ESIPS, that it might be a nice thing to direct those savings towards implementing lead for existing buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I think the long-term savings will pay themselves, for themselves.
Any other comment? Yes?
I think in terms of process, there's been a lot said. So I think the next step would be, and Chris is going to take the lead, on drafting a report which would come back to the board for adoption. I guess we, we can undertake to send a letter to the commissioner saying, we do, we are in the process and plan to report. Since the timeframe is out already, we might as well take the time to get a report that we've seen rather than rush, rushing that through and that gets generated and vetted internally and comes back to the board for, for review and adoption.
Question about that report. Would it summarize the public comment that we heard this evening or only include board comments?
I think there's a lot of overlap, actually. I think it's really the board's report as informed by the public comments.
And to follow up on Tim's comment, I mean, how, how much lead time would the public get to see this draft report before it comes back to us so they have time to read it and consider it before we discuss it here and before we have the, the public hearing on it?
Well, it isn't generated when they're, I mean, we have to look at our meeting schedule and the time to prepare it. It'll be on a public agenda.
Okay.
But...
I know one of the criticisms that comes up often is that the public should have enough, you know, notification, enough lead time to have the chance to be able to read an entire report and to properly critique it so they have less to prepare by the time they come in front of us.
I mean, we, we should try to give the lead time, but I think at the moment, we're out of time, but we could, so we don't want to... Certainly it'll be on a public hearing agenda and the board will get it. And it'll be at the planning board office at that time for review, once it's on an agenda.
But Alan, I mean, they have to, they've got a referendum scheduled for October 2nd. We don't know when the Department of Education is going to speak. Don't we need to be sensitive to the fact that something needs to get to that department in a relatively short time to be effective? I mean, if we start waiting for another meeting to come up and have another public session?
Yeah, I just don't think we've been able to define it with enough detail that anybody can take all the, what you've said tonight and turn into a letter that everybody's going to be pleased with.
You don't think you could do that, Chris?
I mean, one, here's a question. Does everything that comes into this report have to be a complete consensus of the board? Because the wording, the language of what's being asked for, it sounded like, you know, the commission wants our, wants the board to respond and advise. And so it seems to me that, you know, if there were opinions expressed by a couple of people, maybe they're not agreed upon by everybody, but they weren't being included in the letter. Would that, would it be your sense that that would be acceptable?
I mean, there's no, it's only a question of what is acceptable to the board. I mean, there's no blueprint of what we're required to do if, if anything.
I would love to see it done that way, almost like a set of minutes, you know, for the meeting, in a way, recording people's various comments. I didn't hear anything tonight from any board member that made me feel uncomfortable, so...
All right. I think that, that the need to get this completed and sent to Trenton is a little, a little more urgent than, than the process that we've outlined so far. So suppose when a draft is ready, that we have a small committee review it and decide whether or not it's acceptable and it will just go on and it will be available in the office to those of you who are interested in it. But I think you've, you've heard the comments from the board and they reflect a lot of the things that were said in the public portion of the meeting for which we are grateful because it, it really reinforces that we're moving along the right path. So can I get two or three volunteers to read this report sometime in the next week or so? David, terrific. Anyone? Mia? Anyone else want to be in on this? And Louise? Okay. So the three of you constitute a committee and when Chris gets... Well, we, we can only have four because it would be a regular, yeah, it would be a regular meeting if we had more. So, Chris, that's the group and will you let the office know when, when you want them to read your draft?
Yes, I'll work with Eileen to get the minutes. I'm going on vacation next week, so ideally I'll get something to you before the holiday next week. At least get your draft.
Okay, very good.
If I can just add one more thing. I, I think that it would be great if in fact the school board could give us a periodic long-range report, facilities report. I think it's requested, it suggested it be every five years. I think we would be in better shape coming to the subject if we were saying aggressive things and it would maybe keep the schools sharper too if they knew they had to report to somebody every five years. So let's, let's try to do some...
All right. So we will have a report sometime in the next week or so, and I think that's about... I really want to congratulate everyone who sat through all of this. I know you've sat through a number of meetings on the same topic, so thank you again. And to the school board members, thank you for coming in, giving us your time and attention and so that we're better informed on this topic and...
Moved to adjourn?
David has, okay, it's been moved and seconded. All of you in favor of adjourned?
Aye.